I'd like to call our meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, on behalf of the Planning Commission, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for February 11, 2025. For those of you that haven't been with us in the past, our standard procedure is to for the application items, to look to our staff, our planner and our engineer to give us an overview of the application, look to the applicant for their comments, invite comments from anyone in the audience, and then we review the item, deliberate, and make a decision. And pretty straightforward process. Our first item, we've got a couple administrative items that we have to take care of first. One is annually, we elect officers, and so we need to do that and then review the minutes. But the first thing we'll start out with is the election of officers, and so we need a chairperson and a vice chairperson. And so let me start out with the chairperson. So we need to nominate someone and then vote on that. So.
Nominate Walter Cutler?
I second.
Well, that's really kind.
There's no better person.
So, anyone else want to nominate? Okay. So, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thanks, everyone. Actually, I appreciate the opportunity to do this, I really do.
Well, you're good at it.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. The next is to nominate our vice chairman.
Would you like to nominate Will, also?
And I'd like to second it.
Second it.
And third it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Buddy?
Thank you.
Next item then is a review of our minutes from our January 14, 2025 meeting. Does anyone have any comments or is there a motion to approve? Craig?
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes as submitted for January the 14th.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? So, our first item is the Planning Commission will consider the request of the property owner at 1100 Orchard Ridge for approval of a grading appeal, side yard pool fence, side yard outdoor TV wall, side yard kitchen area in an accessory building, which in this case is a pergola, other than a garage or pool house. And so, Eric?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. -- yes, ma'am.
Do I have to disclose that I live on Orchard Ridge, just a few houses away? It won't affect my decision?
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultant. As was stated, our first item is 1100 Orchard Ridge Road. There's a few items that require Planning Commission approval. The home itself on this property was permitted last October, I believe, and so this is the supplemental accessory structures, primarily found in the rear yard, but there are some side yard items as well. So this is on the east side of Orchard Ridge in the A1 zoning district. There is no natural features that impact the property. The home that you see in the aerial images is the previous home that had since been demolished in preparation for the construction of the new home. So the first item for consideration is the side yard pool fence. The pool fence is standard to what we typically see, four-foot metal fence, the image shown on the lower part of your screen here. When looking at the yard determination graphic, it's flipped around, and so as you can see, north is facing down in this image, so you'll just have to orient your perception here. So our focus is mainly on the rear yard. However, in the side yard, you can see that there's the segment of fence that ties into the edge of the home here. On this side of the home, the fence stays well within the rear yard. So it's this segment of fence that's under Planning Commission consideration today. We'll go through the screening, approach, and just a few slides. This is just more of a zoomed-in version. The next item for consideration is the barbecue area here. This is behind the house, as you can see. However, due to the way that the yard determination graphic delineates the rear from the side yard, it's technically located in the side yard. So the other item for consideration is the pergola. This is primarily in the rear yard. However, there's a small portion in the side yard, but what's for Planning Commission consideration is that it's an accessory building that's not a pool or pool house or a garage. Pool house is shown here. This is also in the rear yard. It requires Planning Commission approval. I'm sorry, it doesn't require Planning Commission approval because it's a pool house. And then the other accessory building, garage, is also not subject to Planning Commission approval. So the TV wall, there was a component of the plan that was like a small wall that I believe rose out of the ground that had a TV. The intent was to project a TV from it, and that's no longer an item. That's part of this consideration, so the Planning Commission will no longer consider that as part of the agenda item. The home barbecue area and pizza oven, we did a full analysis, shown here, on the ordinance dimensions in terms of setbacks. It's the location that's, again, in the side yard. It's not within any setbacks, and so it meets the setback standards. But again, because it's within the side yard here, zoomed in, shown here, and then in this general area here. This, just for your information, is a attached pergola, pavilion type of structure, and so the proposed barbecue area is right adjacent to that, to that element.
Where adjacent? Where?
So here's the main home. This is the side yard, and then connected to the house is this pergola, connected pergola here, and so this is that structure connected to the house, and then right underneath it is this.
Oh, thank you.
Moving on to the proposed pergola, again, these are the ordinance standards. We checked for building height, floor area, location, and all the setbacks. Everything's in compliance, it's just that the U standard, it's not a garage or a pool house, it requires Planning Commission approval. So just to give you a zoomed-in version, again, the orange is the rear yard, so well behind the house, there's a small little portion of this segment that encroaches into the side yard. But to follow the outline of the pergola sections, it's this portion here, and then this is the pool house, and then the north section here. And then these are some cross-sections of the pergola detail. As you can see, it's approximately 10 feet, 9 inches in height. The second perspective here shows the north-south face, so this is looking at the pergola. Going from left to right would be walking through the pergola. There we go. So again, looking at the pergola, ties into the pool house here, and then jogs along the north side, and then here's another perspective from the pool. The pool house, what the Planning Commission is considering for the proposed pool house is adequate screening or sufficient screening. We worked pretty diligently with the applicant to walk through and enhance the screening standards of the landscape plan. They've done a really good job with making modifications to that in order to get it prepared to come before the Planning Commission for consideration. But as we go through the landscape plan, the Commission, if there's any concerns, can certainly voice those concerns. This is an image of the pool house. This is the front, west view, the rear, east view. We did a height dimension to confirm that it's within the 14-foot height limit, which it is. And then just the two side views. And then the landscape plan was so big, I chopped it up into sections just to kind of zoom in and give you an idea of some of the detail of what's being proposed. So we have a variety of plantings, 20 to 30-foot Norway spruce, shown here, 15 to 25-foot white pine, shown here. Don't recall what that one was. Norway spruce, thank you. Green giant cedar, 12 feet in height, that helps block where the side yard fence would be visible from Orchard Ridge. And then here you have a 12-foot, I believe it's 12-foot.
Six to seven.
Thank you. Six to seven, there it is, six-to-seven-foot cedar hedge. And then additional screening along the property line, 20 to 30-foot Norway spruce, 20-foot white spruce. So there's a good mixture here, spaced per the ordinance requirements to adequately screen the fence along the side property line. And then just going further into the back of the lot, you have more of the same mixture of large trees, and then I believe this is an existing.
It's a new hedge.
It's a new hedge. Wintergreen cedar. I didn't catch the height on the plans of that hedge.
On the far foot, and on the fence behind it's existing.
Okay, thank you. And then in front of that would be lime-white hydrangea to help enhance views from outside looking in, and then we have boxwood plantings scattered throughout, and additional hedge shown here to help enhance the screening of the elements. And then, of course, just along the property line here, you have more of the same what was shown on the opposite side. But again, that's the rear yard, so what these screening elements are intending to screen is the pool house and the pergola accessory building. And then this is just to show that there's some existing tree coverage along the property line. And then the last few slides will show some aerials and color renderings to give you an idea of the intent to screen the back of the property and the side yard fence. So we did a full analysis of landscaped open space. As you can see, there's a rear yard sport court, and then just kind of like an exercise area. But going through the full analysis for the landscaped open space, the property is in compliance with its open space requirements. So we'll be looking from the garage area, going back towards the fence, showing the screening in front. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, be happy to answer. The applicant is also here.
Any questions for Eric?
Eric, did you go over any where the fills were in your presentation?
Leah will go through the fills.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Leah. I'm gone.
Thanks, Eric.
So the applicant is proposing this small area that does have 4 feet of fill on the project, so I will highlight that area. Other than that, they don't have any retaining walls or other utilities that are impacted. They do have some proposed drainage improvements that I will also point to in the next slide here. So again, just an overview of where the home is, just to highlight some of the drainage patterns. The front of the home is over here, is Orchard Ridge. They are proposing some swales to draw the water or to continue the water to go in the same pattern that it is. They've also proposed five leaching basins, so one in the rear, two on this side of the home, and two on the other side of the home. So again, those are just open areas that water can collect in and remain on the property before it goes to the neighbors. So we're pretty happy that they've proposed five in various locations around the property. There is an area of fill in the 3- to 4-foot range, is this area. We did meet with the applicant multiple times, they had varying locations, and they did a good job of behind the home really reducing that, but there is this small area that they do still have in front of you. So that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Leah, where is that on the overhead plan?
So this is the front of the home, the north is up. So this is the larger plan, and it's still this purple area here.
And that's because that's their, the reasoning is that's their back area in order to keep it patio flat?
Technically, that's the side yard, right? Because the back is this way.
No, I'm just saying, their reasoning for having the fill, their need to have the fill, you met with them out there, was?
Yeah, we can let Matt talk more about it, but I think you have some equipment on this side, and it drops pretty heavily down this way.
Any other questions for Leah? Well, you can, yes, ma'am. Okay, thanks, Leah. So the applicant?
Matt Mosher with Mosher Landscape Architecture. Thank you, as always, for having myself. I'm here with a nice little team here. I've got the homeowner, Steven Eisenberg. His wife isn't able to be here, but he is. The architecture team, Soroki Architecture, and Builders TSA. So we couldn't be more proud.
So which one is Mr. Eisenberg?
Mayor.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. Couldn't be more proud of this project. I mean, you know, we, the client assembled what I think is an all-star team, and as I think most of you know, we worked really, really hard to bring everything within compliance with the ordinance of the city, while getting the client what they want and respecting the neighbors. In this case, I'll kind of start with the fills since it's up here. This is teeny compared to what we were originally working with, some of the stuff, but I'm not going to go into a ton of detail, but there's reasons in the back where we step down and step back up because we're working super hard to stick within your ordinance. If it was a perfect situation, we'd have lots of fill requests, okay? The reason for the fill that you see here is that the old house that was there actually had a man-made dugout area for a walkout, okay? So the natural topography of the land actually would have carried up through where we're showing the fill. So essentially, when we put the new house back in, we're actually bringing it back to the natural state is what we're doing. That area was a forced walkout, which created that situation. So although it is fill and although it is outside of your ordinance, we think it is an improvement to what it was, okay? So that's the fill. The other items, the pool fence, pretty straightforward, and I'm with you guys quite often on these. As I think we demonstrated, we worked really hard to make the pool fence go away, but in a very tasteful manner, that doesn't look forced. We also added significant evergreen screening around the property that probably is quite a bit more than what you guys are used to seeing. Not only does our client want the privacy, but again, we want to respect the city's ordinances and the neighbors around us. So really, everything within this backyard, some of it technically called side yard, will not be visible from really anywhere unless you're really peeking through. The last part that's, well, the last two parts is the pergola. As you guys saw from the renderings, this is an architectural landscape element that just really adds a lot of character to the pool area. This is something that before we proposed, we wanted to make sure that it was going to be in keeping with the city and the standards. As some of you probably know, there are numerous ones of these around. The most similar is the corner of Pembroke and Long Lake. There's a very similar setup right there on that corner on that home. Just south of Long Lake on Loser, there's a front yard pergola that you can see right through Loser, and then there's a couple that are pretty similar over in the kind of the Lyndaleane area. So we think it's a reasonable request, and certainly in most people's eye, I think a beautiful statement, but again, nobody's going to see it except for the homeowner and their guests. And then the last thing is a basic barbecue, simply because of how the house is oriented. It puts it in a side yard, but I think it's fairly straightforward. I will be quiet now and answer any questions you have.
How old was the home that you tore down?
You guys know? I don't think it was that old, right?
The initial was like 84, but it was remodeled.
So the original build was 84?
Yeah.
I just wondered, because we normally wouldn't allow for a cut to have a cut like that. It was before my time and before we got to the, I just wondered. Okay. So that brings it back up, Matt?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you have a man-made depression that was there, and now it brings that depression right back through, so you have a consistent grade now.
I appreciate you staying within the ordinance and not asking for a bunch of cuts and fills.
Thank you. We try, trust me.
Any other questions for Matt? I have one.
Sure.
So there's a large house that would be just to the north of this, it's a big white house.
Yep.
So I see you're putting in, well, those 20 to 30-foot Norways. Is that all on that side to screen that?
All on that side of the whole, well, I shouldn't, all on that side plus everywhere else.
Right, but some are bigger than others, but I see some.
The 12-footers and.
Is it going to screen it from that house?
Yeah, yeah, that whole side.
It's really high up, I noticed.
Yeah, and as you may be aware, the biggest spade tree we can get with a spade is about a 30-foot tree. Once we get above that, then we're going to start losing them. So we're putting the biggest possible tree in without, you know, within reason, right? We could give crazy stuff, but, but yeah, I mean, and plus, you know, we're sitting up a little bit there, so it's going to have significant coverage. You know, we're not talking about 10-foot trees along the line there, we're talking about substantial trees.
How high is the hedge behind this sport court?
12 feet, and just so you can create some context, is the grade from the sport court up to that, where that hedge starts, is about a 6-foot difference. So you're 12 plus 6, you know, so you'd have to be up really high, so the sport court's sitting much lower, is what I'm getting at.
And I noticed it backs up to another sport court, so you wouldn't be bothering that neighbor, and it's quite a distance to the other?
It's a long way. Yeah, I don't know the exact footage, but it's a long way.
That's very considerate, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt?
Well, the neighbor to the north would be aware of this, obviously, and they haven't said anything, I'm assuming.
The neighbors?
The neighbor to the north that you were referring to.
They would have all been notified, right, Amy? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Two questions. Could you tell me, one has nothing to do with rules and regulations, the tree source, is it one source or multiple sources?
The tree type?
Source.
Oh.
One tree farm, three?
No, so when we get into those type of trees, it's, they're sourced really all over the state, and sometimes a little bit out of Ohio. Mostly the bigger trees, there are two things, there are old, like homesteads that have a farm, and they didn't really grow the trees to sell them, but the tree guys will go knock on doors and say, hey, can we buy your six trees that are back there? And that's how they do it.
Some old lady?
Well, we won't say that, but they're kind of, it's re-treed, you know, it's moved. And there are some farms, but when we start getting into that big stuff, it's coming from all over. So this might have, this project might have 10 to 12 different locations that these trees are brought in from.
So as you sit here today, have the contracts been let?
Yeah, the homeowners approved all the budgets and everything, and they kind of.
But the trees, I'm just sort of curious.
Oh, that'll be up to the TSA here, but yeah, they'll be having their landscape guy do that. So usually, there's really three really good tree guys around here that do those size of trees.
Three good ones.
GP Enterprises is probably one that we use the most, Advanced Tree Service, and then Boyd. So they all do big tree moving. So it's an interesting business.
It is. Another question unrelated to rules and regulations. Looking at the schematic we see in front of us, it looks like there's a motor court at the front of the house, is that correct?
That is correct.
And also to the, adjacent to that is a, it looks like a Kmart parking lot, is that correct?
It's supposed to represent Myers, but.
I'm sorry.
I'm teasing. I said it's supposed to represent Myers, not Teena. No, it's, so on top view, it looks large, but if we went back to the renderings, you can see it's tucked in with the grades and, you know, you don't see it, so, and everything's in with compliance of the ordinance.
I'm quite sure it is, I'm just sorry, since the owner is here, it's probably not fair to ask the question, but why?
They want parking in the first, so there's parking and parking for, you know, if they entertain, and then.
Do they have wild parties?
I think they probably do.
I live on that street, so I want to be invited.
Basically, there's four-car parking on each side, and then the motor court's meant to be architectural, but everything's within ordinance, within cuts and fills, all.
It just seems, it just seems to, it might seem to a casual observer that that's almost like commercial parking, and one wonders, why? I mean, they're such nice people, why would they have wild parties like that?
I don't know, but the good news is, is the only time it'll look like that is from an airplane, so from the road, you're not going to see anything.
Thank you for taking my questions.
My pleasure.
Any other questions for Matt?
Yours first, not mine.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that has comment on this proposal? Okay, so.
I love the landscaping. It's really outstanding.
Okay. So I bring it back for further comment, discussion, or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
This is a stunning project, and it is, the family should be complimented, and the team that came up with all the answers should be complimented, and it's been professionally presented to us, and I know it represents a lot of hard work. Congratulations. I'd like to move that all three applications be approved as submitted.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Eisenberg, do you live in the city now?
We live in Philly.
Well, welcome to the city.
Thank you, we're thrilled. Can't wait.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Free projects.
Congratulations. Nice job, Matt. As usual.
Good motion. So our next item is the Planning Commission will consider the request of the property owner at 39475 Woodward Avenue for site plan approval.
We're all indicted?
Thank you.
For site plan approval and a natural features setback variance. I think it says four, but I think that's what we're doing. Okay, go for it.
Okay, the next item is 39475 Woodward Avenue. The site is located on the southwest side of Woodward, just south of West Long Lake Road. As you can see, there is multiple zoning within the boundaries of the site. P1 is in purple here in the far back, a small sliver of the A6 district where there's an existing building, and then the red area is the C1 commercial. And so the focus of our presentation is primarily within the P1 parking district. So it was a few months ago where we met with the applicant, both the city engineer and planning consultants, to discuss some challenges that were being had at the site in terms of flooding. And as you can see here on this wetlands map, this is a branch of the Rouge River, Corton Branch, I believe, that cuts relatively close to the existing building here along the south side of the property. So there's been a lot of flooding incidences that have occurred over time. So what came before us in pre-submital office hours meetings was a discussion about ways in which the applicant could mitigate some of the flooding on the site, so this is just an aerial view, you're familiar with the Kingston Hotel site. The site plan shown here, this is the landscaped open space, which is improving from 32% to about 38%. It's because they're removing a portion along the south boundary. It's because they're removing a portion along the south, south boundary, where much of the flooding takes place. So what's in pink shown here is the twenty-five-foot natural feature setback. Here again is where the existing building is encroaching into that area, so the primary focus is this red circle area here. This is the existing site plan, so you have here the FEMA floodway in blue. There's about forty-five parking spaces that are within the floodway along the south property line here, and those are all gonna be removed so that this whole area can be cut back towards the existing floodplain where that area is labeled. So from the existing natural features plan to the proposed, again, this is where our focus is. All of this area has been cut away and is now the proposed floodplain mitigation area. The site is still well within compliance of the parking ordinance, and so all of the parking is being met by the remainder of the parking area behind the building. The portion of the parking area that's shaded in gray, this is all being resurfaced with asphalt. With the improvements that are proposed, this, as you recall, was where the twenty-five-foot natural features setback area was. So this improvement here is where there will be additional paving within the natural features that requires planning commission approval, so. Looking at their tree removal plan, these are the trees shown in red that are being removed. Again, this is the natural feature setback area, so anything that gets touched or activity that is proposed within the natural feature setback is required to be replaced. And so with their proposed landscaping, these are the trees that they're proposing in order to satisfy the mitigation requirements for tree replacement. So you can see there's tulip tree, swamp white oak, river birch, red maples, linden, river birch, and then a lot of the ground cover consists of basic short grass seed, stormwater seed, forested wetland establishment seed. So sensitive to the area where there's the waterway, as well as the natural features setback, to be sensitive to those areas with their plantings of proposed trees and shrubs. So just recently, the applicant was able to provide some images. If the applicant's here, they can speak more to the specifics of these, but just to show you some of the extent of the water damage that has occurred over the, over the years, inside the building and out.
Which, which building is that, Eric?
I don't know which building for sure.
At the Kingsley or is that the accessory building?
It could be the accessory building, but I don't have.
It's the main building, it's the ballroom of the main hotel.
That water comes all the way in.
Basement level?
The ballroom is in the basement, correct. The basement's actually probably about five feet lower than the parking lot, that's the parking lot right there, so it's unfortunately a bad situation.
It's been doing this how long?
The first event was July two thousand and twenty-three, there was a hundred-year storm. The river crested, it fills up the parking lot. The current stormwater system empties out into catch basins in the parking lot, which then when they fill up, they empty out into the river. When the river fills up, unfortunately, the water comes backwards and backwards into the building. So the worst event was the hundred-year storm in July of twenty-three. It happened again in August of twenty-three, it happened again in August of twenty-four. Those are the three largest events. We've probably had twenty smaller events that don't reach this level, but it's been an ongoing problem for the last eighteen months.
And what about the accessory building, any flooding there too?
The accessory building is at grade, there's no basement, so there's, and it's not being used at the moment. It's locked up, so no problems on that, that building. But obviously, there were weddings going on during these pictures. It's unfortunate for the guests, it's unfortunate for the operations team. We've spent just under two million dollars in repairs and remediation and restoration to date. Unfortunately, every time there's rain forecast, we, everybody crosses their fingers and hopes this doesn't happen again. We've lost just under a million dollars in future bookings because we've had events canceled because they know we have this problem. And so we're really looking forward, we're happy that we finally have a team together that has a solution that will hopefully solve this problem once and for all, so that we don't have to, again, be nervous every time there's rain forecast.
Who did you hire to, who did you hire to figure this out?
Atwell are the civil engineers, unfortunately, he's stuck in traffic. The engineer who's assisting us, he should be here any moment if you have technical questions. I'm the CFO for the ownership entity, Kingsley Hospitality LLC, but Atwell civil engineers have been helping us come up with a solution over the last twelve months.
So just to repeat that, because of the activity that's within the natural feature setback, that's what triggers planning commission's consideration, and again, that's the areas of improvements on the south side of the property. City engineer is here to discuss their involvement in analysis. But again, it's for the improvements that are on the south side of the property, and again, that's removing surface area to improve the open space. And then the result of that, we found that the existing parking will maintain compliance of the parking requirements for the overall site.
Is there a guarantee that this will work?
Not from my perspective. Someone more qualified to.
Unfortunately, though, there are no guarantees, but we are hopeful that this will mitigate the problem.
What was the thinking behind banking these thirty-eight parking spaces? Why wouldn't you want to maximize the potential for capturing as much rainwater as possible? I mean, right now, you've, you've.
We're losing parking spaces, correct?
Yeah, you know you are, but you could lose more. If you wanted to, you could take, according to your analysis, you could remove more than thirty-eight spaces, be in compliance with parking, and either create a detention basin or increase the wetlands. I mean, just to try to, you know, avoid these flooding, why wouldn't you want to eliminate as many parking spots as you could?
There is an operational impact, I understand you're talking about ordinance. I would have to defer to the engineer. This, this plan thought split the difference of meeting the volume calculations and solving the problem as well as leaving us with the parking we thought we needed operationally. Beyond that, I would have to defer to the engineer.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys need the parking, then fine. Anecdotally, I go out there and there just seems to be acres of open parking, but if you think you need it, then fine, it's just if you didn't need it.
No, you're understood, and you're right, it's when we have a sold-out hotel and a two-hundred-person wedding going on at the same time, that's when we, and Joe Mears is sold out, that's when we need it, but it's not every day, correct?
That's my question, I was gonna ask, is how big is that ballroom hall?
I'm sorry, how big is the ballroom?
How does, how many people, how big a wedding can you have there?
Set up for a wedding, it can push three hundred, two-fifty to three hundred people.
So then you have three hundred, and then what's maximum rooms at the hotel?
One hundred and forty-four.
Do both, right?
I'm sorry.
They stay at the hotel and have the.
I hope so, that's the goal. That's what we start stuff.
But at any given time, you need roughly five hundred, up to five hundred parking spots.
It's not without question, and Joe Mears is a third party, we run space to them, so they need.
I think Commissioner Hostler's point, though, is obviously you have a very bad situation here that what we're trying to say is, I think what you were trying to say is, hey, take what you need, mitigate this whole issue.
Yeah, and I get it, it's a balance, and if you're fortunate enough to have, you know, guests that take up all your parking, then I get it, but.
And this is, I mean, this is only one part of the solution, we are doing other remedial processes as far as with the roof, and we're redirecting roof drains to not, to go to the north, we're doing things with sump pumps, we're doing things with backflow prevent. So this is, what we're here today to talk about is only one part of keeping the stormwater out of the building in the first place.
Can I, can I propose this, guys? That maybe Leah will be able to answer a couple of these things, so maybe turn to her, and then maybe by that point, his engineer will be here.
Yeah, so Eric pointed to most of the main stuff that's occurring, but one thing I also wanted to say is they are proposing underground storage, underground detention facility as well. So that is point to that, and here, under the existing parking lot, so that is an area that will store stormwater underneath the parking. So to his point, there is additional work besides what Eric had pointed to with the area of removing the parking. So overall, I know Jamie Burton met with the applicant multiple times to discuss this. We felt that their solution was a good one. They addressed water quality and channel protection that the ordinance requires them to do when they're revisiting the stormwater on their site. So that's what I have.
Question?
So, many times, we have people coming in from the condominium association that are behind this, this place. Is the Kingsley making this worse for them with redirecting water?
This should be making it better for them, but it will not solve problems beyond the property. I can't say that this will improve everything else.
Better for them?
This, by removing all this parking lot, they're adding this kind of detention basin that will help with neighboring stormwater too. It's less, less impervious area that will be there, and more natural, so that will help just in general, the neighboring areas, but it's, this is, this solution is not meant to address other properties nearby.
An underground detention is different than an underground retention, can you explain that? What they're doing here?
Yeah, so this is, these are pipes that go underneath the pavement that holds the water, so the water, when there's too much, it'll sit in these pipes and then slowly outlet into this area.
Into what area?
Into the, what do we kind of call this, the detention area.
Is that what those boomerang-shaped things in the picture are?
I'm not sure what picture you're referring to.
Yeah. This?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what are. Part of the system to.
Yeah.
Draw the water away. Draw the water out of it.
So in answer to Catherine's question, difference between detention and retention is the period over which water is stored. Really, the critical issue here, and I guess your engineer isn't here, but this is, in some respects, less about the area that's being excavated, because there's really not, and I, I didn't understand.
I did.
Why we were doing what we were doing. I wasn't sure if they were carving this out because they were thinking in the future they were gonna develop something and they were pulling out of the floodplain. So, the, the critical factor is the height. So, basically, what you could do with this situation is, you, because really, their cut and fill really isn't, it's not a huge area, I think they're cutting eleven hundred yards out or something, which really isn't a huge area. So, and I guess this is really for your engineer, because it's really about the height. So, and I didn't take a deep dive into the numbers, because I weren't really sure what you were doing. I mean, I saw it, but if the floodplain, the hundred-year floodplain is a certain elevation, so if you bring the grade up beyond that hundred-year floodplain without doing any excavating, you are going to pull out the adjacent property from the floodplain, which in your case, if, if the water in that lower level, and this condition has actually existed for at least thirty years. Because that area, I know for fact that that condition has existed for at least thirty years. So if you don't bring up the grade high enough, just excavating some material out of there isn't gonna solve that problem. Just, and I'm sure you guys did all your engineering analysis, but it's really all about the height of the land, because once the water comes in, water reaches its own grade. And so if the, the slope, the height of the surrounding area is higher than where the water's going, the water's not gonna go over that hump.
So you're saying you want to have that, that mitigation area, the water, the land should be higher?
Well, no, what I guess, well, this is, this is what, and this, this is an engineer figured all this out, and so to your question, will it solve the problem? When you, when you take a deep dive into this, what happens is you need to have the grade higher, certainly higher than the hundred-year floodplain. And what someone should have done is figured out, if that water is getting in there, what the height of that water is, because if the height of the property along the perimeter is not higher than what that water flow was into that building, just digging out eleven hundred cubic yards of material isn't gonna solve your problem. I mean, you'll get approval from here, but just so you know, that condition has been there for a long time, and.
And again, there are three things going on, you're right, there's a cut here to expand kind of this detention area that's now becoming the natural feature, there's the underground detention system that's being added that doesn't exist now, and to your point, the entire parking lot is being raised. So, and I don't, I can't give you the specifics if it's five feet, if it's ten feet, but there is, as part of this plan, there is the new grade, the new elevation of the parking lot will be higher than it is now. So it is the combination of all three of those factors.
But it needs, you, what you really ought to make sure of is it's gonna be higher than what that water level was on your first floor where we saw water, because that's how high your water gets, and.
Oh, it's definitely higher than the look, it's definitely higher than the floor of the ballroom. The ballroom, that, the first, this three-story building, the first floor is underground, undergraded, so it's definitely higher.
Okay, I mean, I guess it, I'm just making the point. So Will, you raised the issue, you said, well, why not excavate more of the parking lot or use it? Really, at the end of the day, the key consideration is the height. And so just excavating more area, you can see by all the water coming in there, that's not gonna give enough area to collect that water, because the water's reaching its own height. And so the level has to be greater than what we saw in those pictures, which we see water on the first floor, on that first floor, which is actually down, almost downstairs in the Kingsley. So it's gotta be higher than that. So hopefully you guys figured all that out.
So I look at what Will's seen, I see the whole back of this property that Kingsley owns, and I, I, until, I don't think we have any more, anything else we can talk about until your engineer gets here. I see that we've had a lot of flooding in that area for all the people who are behind you, who are taxpayers in the city of Bloomfield Hills also. And we have a water plan that is going to put it into a new retention area when you have that entire back area there that doesn't seem to be being used to retain water. You're raising the parking lot, why isn't any of that back area being used to have water be sent to it? It seems, and I, I, it's not, whether you're gonna get approval, I don't see, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a yes, just like a yes because you dug out an area for that, because I haven't heard from your engineer, but that's, seems to me, at a two-million-dollar program, problem, I would be doing a lot more with the, with the back part of your, your property there. There are certain trees that you could have in there.
It's a natural feature, and you're talking about tearing out trees, I don't, I, I don't know if those discussions were had with the consultants or an engineer, but.
You know.
That would be more egregious.
Yeah, I would think that. Adding trees, adding certain kinds of more catch basins, anything, but you're gonna, you're gonna have the retention, and it's still all gonna also go over to this pond? I just, I think that's.
So what you end up with, this goes to the question of, of height of the water and storage, storage of the water. So when you see big detention basins, they're storing water. There's a lot of water coming through here. There's a lot of water coming through here, um, and, um, these are complicated, someone went through a HAC two study. You know what that is, don't you?
Yeah.
They're complicated studies, um, and they figure out what happens to the water, what the water flow is, what the water level is. And so, um, I, I guess we're relying on HRC to have reviewed and approved all this because I could see, because when you, when you confine the water, basically, that, that water gets pushed into that canal. Because you've raised everything else up, and, um, that water gets pushed into that canal and, uh,
And is that just going to flood the neighbors?
Well, i- it's, it's not necessarily because it all reaches its same level. Water, this isn't going to necessarily change, uh, it could change the, the level, but all of that comes into play when you do a HAC two study. It figures it all out, and hopefully, someone did all that.
Gentleman that just walked in.
We have an engineer in the house now, so, yeah. If there are specific questions, uh, sorry about that.
So, just, just to frame this for you?
Yes.
Could you let us know who you are?
Heather Shayer of Batwell.
Okay. So, um, there've been several questions regarding the proposal to create, to remove the building from the floodplain area to prevent the water going into the building. And so, everyone gets that. So, the question becomes, we see that you're removing parking places from the parking lot, and, uh, the information we have is that there was like eleven hundred cubic yards being removed, and there's cuts and fills. No one's really looked at the height of what you're proposing here, not hard, at least on this panel. And so, the question, one question that was raised is, are you sure that this is going to remedy the flooding problem for the Kingsley? That was number, question number one. Question number two is, is this going to create any upstream problems? Could it impact the water, make it higher for the people just north of this, which already have some water problem? Those are really the principal questions. So, could you answer those?
Yeah, uh, so, question one, the, the parking lot is being raised outside of the current flood elevation, so the, the fill that we're adding into what's currently the floodplain is being compensated by a cut area in the south of the parking lot. So, the volume that is being taken out of the existing floodplain is being compensatorily replaced with that cut area. So, we're not going to see any increase in the height or volume of flooding, you know, on the site or upstream. So, it kind of really answers both questions. And then additionally, to hydrologically disconnect this building from the floodplain, it's, it's technically not in the floodplain elevation, right? It's underground san- or storm sewer that's backing up from the river into the building right now. So, by creating this area where flooding in the future can be, um, I'm not going to say detained, but held, uh, in these larger storm events, in that compensatory cut area, will then further be disconnected from the building by adding some check valves in the storm sewer that's connected to the building. So, it kind of all is disconnected, and then, I don't know how much detail you've gone into as far as the additional underground detention that we're providing on site as well.
If you want to present it, that's great.
Yeah. So, um,
You want to come up and present it?
Sure.
Actually, can I get my plans on here? Is that possible? Connect to my computer.
We have, um, let's see, there's some engineer drawings.
So, while he's doing that, the water that we saw going into the unit, so, is that water, that's a basement, so that water is coming in then through, through like the, the storm sewer? Into the unit? Is that what's happening?
Yeah, correct. There, the flood elevation is lower than the elevation of, it's not like water's overtopping sidewalk in
It's not coming in through the door?
Right.
Okay.
As far as I understand.
Current, is the, current storm system backing up into the building?
Correct. So, uh, we worked with HRC to, and I guess this is probably not the plan to show. We'll just stay on this plan, but, um, I'll bring up some numbers here. Based on the redevelopment area, if we're talking about just the portion of the site that we're repaving, uh, Oakland County requires some amount of detention to be stored onsite. So, the underground detention that we're proposing in conjunction with the floodplain mitigation that is in excess of our fill essentially adds up to what would be a hundred-year storm event onsite. So, in those cases, instead of creating additional flood downstream, we're holding that water onsite essentially.
Is that what's in there? Is that a tank?
Yeah, an underground detention system.
Is it under, oh, the, the, repaving in the natural fe- uh, uh, feature setback? I don't even see any parking spaces there. Why, why are you doing that?
So
It's not been explained.
In the natural feature setback, we are only replacing with green space and floodplain mitigation cut. Onsite, under the parking, we're proposing an underground detention system. So
My question was that, why are you repaving in that area instead of using more of that space for, uh, next to that, uh, building for, for purposes of
You're talking just east of the existing building on the south?
It says asphalt repaving in natural feature setback. I'm asking about that little area that doesn't seem to have any parking spaces. What is that for?
So, there's an existing sanitary lift station in that location that services this area, so we're preserving that, that lift station, we're repaving it to bring it, its elevation up out of the floodplain similarly to the rest of the parking lot. It's the, that's why we're not utilizing it for mitigation.
Let, let me suggest this. At this point, there's a lot of engineering that goes into this, and I guess, as I was looking at those pictures, I was thinking the water, because I saw where the floodplain is now, it goes right up to the building, that it was actually like getting into the building there, it was actually, but if you've got water coming in, um, through the storm system, yeah, you need like check valves and that. This
That's part, that is part of the solution.
That's not going to necessi- this is more than a floodplain problem. There's
To be clear, the compensatory cut handles the entire floodplain volume that we're
Yeah.
filling, right? So theoretically
There's other aspects, and I guess we've got to just assume that what all you guys did, these, these brilliant engineers figured it all out so that they can answer your question and say, "Yeah, it's mitigated." But then, we also heard, and someone's going to ask again, or just want to firm up, this isn't going to create a bigger problem for the people to the north. And everyone's looked at that, and the answer is no.
Correct. The
Because that, that comes up all the time. Okay? Does anyone have other questions?
Well, to pick up on that, so, I mean, any kind of development is going to have some effect somehow, some way. It may be de minimis, but there's an effect. So, the hydrology, if that's the right word, of the waters that are coming from, is that, this is Barden?
Yeah.
That neighborhood? And is the, is, is the, the flow is coming to the south? Is that the analysis? And, um, I mean, can this project be developed in a way that can in any way mitigate the pressures that that community is experiencing? Because it, it's an ongoing issue, and while it's not your problem, I get it, it kind of isn't directly in the way that you're, you're raising the parking lot, which logically would impede in some way the natural flow of water. Now, that may not be a cause and effect to their backup and their properties, but it'd be nice if there's a way to channel waters in a fashion that might alleviate some of that potential.
Yeah, sure. I actually want to point out that this plan does remove a significant portion of impervious surface, which contributes directly to runoff. So, by reconfiguring the parking, adding this mitigation area, not only are we creating an area for historical flooding to, you know, occupy, we're also theoretically, at least, reducing the runoff that comes from the site. And you're right, it does flow from north to south here. So, we have the mitigation area plus the additional underground detention, which is designed to hold, you know, those, uh, one to two-year storms essentially.
So, if the parking lot's being raised, is the presumption that the water is going to be channeled along the natural features up to the, to the raised parking lot and then just flow naturally to the south into the increased, um, wetland area?
Yeah, so that, that whole floodplain mitigation area is all hydrologically connected to the floodway. So, at least based on a theory, it, it should, you know, flow directly into it.
Hey?
Just got a question. I, I, I know that, you know, I read this letter, and I know Louis is here, but I know Jamie had a lot to do with this, and I know Jamie in particular has a lot to do with folks right next door, Barden, so I just wanted to either ask Amy or someone here to recall any conversation about making sure that whatever's done here is not going to impact the neighbors, because that is a real big concern. You might have had that discussion. I, reading this letter, I think that's what this letter says, but maybe you can help by explaining the conversation or the meeting or any, any conversation had to do with making sure that the Barden folks are not impacted.
Yeah, I did talk to Jamie multiple times about this because he was involved in all the meetings with them, um, and he does agree and feel that this will solve the problems on the site, and it won't negatively impact others, but it will not directly improve properties beyond this one. So, he did
But it won't It won't harm them necessarily.
It won't harm them, no, but this is not a solution
Yeah.
Even with the parking lot raised in the north?
It, it should help with raising the parking lot and having this underground detention area that they will maintain their own stormwater onsite, so that should help, but it's hard for us to say exactly how much of the whole thing.
I, I do
The goal is really to improve their site.
I do want to clarify as well, we are not raising the entire parking lot. The, the northern half, which in your, in this view here is grayed out, uh, the, the striping is grayed out rather, none of that parking is being raised, so it's, we are not blocking drainage from the north or
That's really helpful.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's really helpful. And is there any, um, was there any analysis of having any of that water, or you're repaving, yes, the entire parking lot?
Uh, what is shown in gray there, yeah.
The entire park, the entire back.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, is there anything on this area where you're not raising, where you would pitch it more to the natural features with all of the tree roots and the
Everything with the lighter striping is intended to be brought to existing gray as, as it currently exists. I will say, based on the, based on the topography of the site, it doesn't really, um, promote draining this parking area to the west. It really does kind of flow north to south. So, you know, we, we can look at it, but I would hesitate to remove trees to achieve something like that.
I'm, I'm just asking for, for, why aren't you using some of the water going to all of the natural area as opposed to counting on this handling everything? That was my question, and you're just saying this, the topography is not, it's not doable.
It's not conducive without removing significant natural features like the trees. The areas that we're talking about impacting currently is paved, so we're converting that from paved space to a green space.
Am I not saying it right?
You, you want to dish the water to the west where there's
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm
Right.
I'm saying that when the, when the The Barden people have come in here.
Might harm them more.
It might harm Barden.
That's what I'm worried about.
They would harm them more.
Yeah, it would. Because you're pushing it towards them.
Yeah.
And then they're going to have, they're funneling it through, I think.
And at the end of the day, none of it matters because it's, it's all about the water level. If the water lo- actually, if the water flows to the west, it's still draining south and east, and so, that's where the water's going to land. And it, as long as someone did all those calculations and analysis, um, um, it, and it's really, it's on the engineers. I mean, we're not going to figure it out sitting here because someone went through all that HAC two analysis and figured it all out. And so, we're relying on the engineers, both ours, HRC, and you guys, and it seems like you guys have figured it all out. So, if there's a greater problem, they'll be back here then, I guess. I mean, that's all
The Barden people will be back here.
Yeah. I guess, I don't know, our, our engineer is saying they're confident that this is not going to negatively impact them. And we're not going to, we're not going to do the analysis.
Okay.
They did the analysis. So, we've got to, at this point, rely, because it's complicated stuff, uh, and, and they've done it all.
Let the experts speak then. I, I do have two questions.
Yes.
First of all, the, uh, and I don't know the name of the group, but Leah, because this is flood and natural features and stuff like that, are there any, and we're messing with, well, we, they are messing with it, is there any state?
Yeah, they already got
They got all that? Okay, all right, sorry about that.
Eagle approval.
Yeah, and then Eagle, that's what I was thinking of. So, speaking of Eagle, um, Dirk, uh, if for some reason something does go wrong here and we did approve it, we're still, we're not
City's not liable.
liable, right? Okay, I just wanted to double-check that.
Oh, you are. Good question.
Okay.
Any other questions for this gentleman?
Greg?
To the engineer, what would be the net effect if the detention, um, facility, which is depicted, was increased by a hundred percent? What would be the net effect, if any, on these issues?
The overall floodplain, I can't speak to the entire floodway as, as a whole, it's a large, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. If we were to increase, essentially double our underground detention volume, which very costly, and I don't know the feasibility of it just standing here, um, but it would likely reduce the amount of water sitting in the, uh, the mitigation area that we are grading.
Forever, for a week, for a month, or for a day?
It is designed to drain dry over a period of seventy-two hours, so it would be, you know, a lasting effect.
And precisely who determined the size and expense of the detention, um, facility that has been dispo-
Yeah, so, we worked with HRC to determine how much of the Oakland County requirements we needed to meet in order to not negatively affect the, the neighbors and the flood situation onsite. So, we're providing everything that, that Eagle requires as far as the mitigation. We're not, if you were to just do the mitigation, there would be no change other than we've relocated where the water floods to on our site. However, by adding the detention that we have added, we're essentially holding some of that water before it ever makes it to the floodplain.
Because it, because it dries naturally. Is that correct?
Because the underground detention releases at a controlled rate, so it'll fill up, hold the water, and then drain slowly.
Or it evaporate? I mean, both things are going on simultaneously.
Yeah.
Is that not correct?
No, that's correct. Yep.
How deep will that area be? What's the deepest it can get?
The underground detention area or the floodplain mitigation?
The floodplain area.
Uh, I think it's five feet deep.
My only thought, if hotel guests have small children, small children are attracted to water, is there any fencing or any protection?
So the mitigation area is not designed to be wet at all times. It is only in events of flooding that it will have any water in it. It's intended to drain dry. But in the event that there is water in there, the slopes are graded at what they call a recoverable slope. So it's something that you could walk on. It's, it's, it's relatively flat, a five-on-one slope.
I need a wall along the parking lot.
Yeah.
As well, see, I see your question. You can't just walk straight into the mitigation area there. And I don't have in front of me this three feet or four feet. But there is a wall along those angled parking spots that you see there that are proposed. There is a wall that stops at the edge of the parking lot.
Is it a wall that's right there right now or one that you're putting in?
It would be a new wall because this entire area is being redesigned.
Okay, so if it's going to be a new wall that's putting in, Dirk, is that a four-foot wall that would be? A four, a, from my law school stuff, something, uh, something that, that is a dangerous area?
An attractive nuisance?
Yes.
No.
Is it four feet? Is that, would that be better than a three-foot wall? Or does it have to be higher than that?
Do you know the ordinance requirements? Is it four feet? It's four feet, right?
Or attractive nuisance?
Is that actually a retaining wall though?
No, we're not proposing any-
That's not holding the water.
No, it's not.
Hold the water in, but, but, but-
This would be like a decorative wall.
The commissioner makes a good point. There's water in there. We've had people drown at St. Hugo's.
Oh, yeah, no, I see what you're, you're like, oh, I thought you thought, yeah.
Their doctor, the family. So what we're saying is you're putting in a new wall. What, what, what city attorney is the safe wall that should be, that should be around this kind of preventing anyone from-
I'm not sure that's a legal question, anyway.
So I, I would think that a four-foot wall would be safe, but-
I mean, you, you put a four-foot wall or gate around a pool, so-
That was my reasoning exactly.
And, and usually, without getting into the details, where you have a, a detention basin, so depending on the slope, that is what dictates whether or not you need a fence around it. And I didn't look at the slope of this, but that's what would dictate-
Yeah, so it's been designed per Oakland County standards to not require a wall. So it's a one-on-six slope. And like I said, it is intended to be, to drain dry. So unless it's actively flooding, it will be, you know, essentially just a flat green space.
I'd like to see a four-foot wall rather than a three-foot wall.
I don't think that's a lot to ask, is it?
No, I mean, we can ask for anything. What, what, what wall are we talking, exactly?
The one where the parking spaces are up against there.
So that wall there, up against parking places, right now that's three feet and you're suggesting-
Well, they're suggesting they're going to put in a three-foot wall.
It's not currently there, they're going to put it in.
So, and, and frankly, whatever we do, I guess, I'm thinking about the neighbors then. You're thinking about the little kids and that's a good thing.
I'm a grandma.
But I'm thinking about the houses that are just on the opposite side of this in what they're going to see. And, um, so, I guess-
Yeah, we could propose some trees on the south side between the mitigation area and the parking.
Because if you start putting up a four-foot wall, those houses, this is all houses on the south side of this. And they overlook this parking lot. And so I think we need to be sensitive to that as well.
I have a feeling that it will look better after, after what we're proposing.
So is there a, is there a planting that is going on then on the south side of this wall?
There's treatment, there's treatmentation in there.
Yeah, but, but that's not how you screen a wall, yeah, I mean-
Oh, no, those, right.
Okay, so that's a, right now that's a three-foot wall?
I don't know that it's been suspected.
We don't have a wall proposed necessarily. There's no retaining wall necessary.
It's not part, it's not part of this plan, but we will put a wall there just so the cars don't part dry back into the area. But it doesn't be decorative. It's not part, again, it's not retaining wall, it is on the slope.
So is that in this plan right now, the wall?
No.
No, but it will be ornamental in all cases.
Well, but, so under our site plan rule, if you're putting in a wall, we ought to know about it, if that makes sense.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's just, so it's not like we can come back later on and put in a three or four-foot wall because the site plan, it, it's got to be approved as part of the site plan. So is, is it, is it something you're contemplating?
Yeah.
Or were you contemplating it before this discussion came up?
This plan has seen many iterations and at one point it was a retaining wall. Now because of, and I know this area grew, so because of the slope, maybe it's not required now. So at this point, yes, it's just contemplated. It sounded like some, it sounds like there was an interest in a wall, but if you don't want a wall, it's not currently on this plan. Again, there's new trees here which achieved the screening that I think you were also looking for for the neighbors to the south.
What percentage of the time would that, would the slope, would it be dry? I know it varies depending on time of year, but in the course of a year, what percentage of the time would it be dry?
How many flooding events have there been? It's essentially only when it's flooded that it-
The, the big flooding events over the past few years have been three in the summer, two to three in the summer.
The vast majority of the time would be dry.
So ninety percent of the time?
I would assume so, I think it's safe to say.
If it's going to be dry ninety percent of the time, this is a flood event, that if something occurs. My personal opinion on the kids is that kids shouldn't be running around outside without their parents around them anyway, number one.
They do though.
Then talk to the parents. If that's going to be dry ninety percent of the time, I don't see that it's a huge issue personally, but-
There's a river there right now, yeah.
Oh, there is? There's a river there now?
Yeah, I mean, at, after this, the area-
Solve for all issues.
I was, I thought maybe this is something that was going to be water in it most of the time. And then maybe that would be a cause for concern. If this is going to be dry ninety percent of the time, I don't, I don't understand the need for that.
Um, city manager, sir, is this, is this the place that the Barden people have complained about overlooking this awful parking lot all these years and-
Detrude, no, it's detrude. I think, is that detrude?
Well, they, they do look close to that. I think they're probably more concerned about the water. But I think this will improve with these trees, it's going to improve the area.
So it's, there, there are high trees, there's not, there's not low shrubs or anything? Well, all of these trees are trees that love water. Am I not correct, correct?
I'm not a landscape architect, but I, we hired a professional, so.
So why, so why, so why were these trees chosen?
Caliper and then the tenant's riverbed.
We do have a landscape architect and they chose these trees intentionally to be in this type of mediation detention area in current.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any trees that are, show, that are lower that, that like, weren't we just doing this on a martel? Different kinds of shrubs that would add layers to block in the area? Block in the parking lot?
So I can, I can leave this thought with, or, or make this thought. So right now, if you sit in that parking lot, you will see those houses right now to the south. And right now, it's all mostly deciduous vegetation. So in the wintertime, you can see from those backyards into this parking lot. Planting the screening, I mean, ideally, we always look for evergreen screening. There is no evergreen screening there now. And a lot of the trees, they're not in great shape. This, you could always ask for evergreen plantings, but it's sort of a bog back there, whether or not that even lived for a long time.
Tougher with water.
Yeah, it's, you know, so it's a complicated area, having looked at it. I looked at it and thought, well, right now, these houses are looking out over a parking lot. There's not a whole lot of screening. And the screening that exists now is deciduous for the most part. And so they're seeing it. I looked at it and thought, well, they're, they're, they're removing these parking places and, and they're putting in the vegetation. Could it be heavier, better? I guess you could always plant more trees. But the evergreen vegetation generally isn't going to do real well in, in a bog, where it's really low. These, I'm not an expert on trees, but, but, you know, some of these trees, birch, you know, but those are going to hang in there more for the water. And some of the stuff is more, these, these varieties are more upland trees. So, I mean, but generally, they ought to be okay. Guess one question I had as I looked at this just now is thinking, there were some landmark trees that were removed, right?
The, my understanding is that there were, but-
I thought I read in your write-up that there were landmark trees removed.
Yes, and I believe that further down it had explained that that had no other benefit.
Okay, and I guess I, I didn't remember reading that, but, so there, there are no landmark trees removed on it?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
There's a removal and replacement table there?
That's just-
Showing the landmark trees removed.
They're showing. So I guess, to summarize then, so we, we've got this application where they want to remove these parking places. They've got engineering analysis that shows that it's going to improve their situation. It's not going to harm any of the neighboring properties. They're removing these parking places. They're creating more of a green space. They're creating more open space. They're planting it. And we've got HRC's, and it's nice to hear from you, but I, I'm relying on HRC having reviewed and approved that this will not create any adverse condition for the people to the north. And so, I mean, that's all we can almost do at this point. I, I think it's an improvement without making a judgment.
Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to-
Yeah, I'm going to do that, but I just sort of wanted to wrap up. So we're done with the engineers and everything.
This is directed to the city manager. So if a cosmetic wall, for lack of a better term, is deemed appropriate for the edge of the proposed parking along the, the planned route there, is that something you can just do administratively? Do you need the-
It sounds like there's some agreement here that they would certainly do something like that for us. Add some, add some trees or screening to help, you know, the look of the area.
Well, I'm thinking about the wall.
The decorative wall.
Decorative wall or, or something that, you know, for safety issues or just to stop cars from going into the area. Is that, because that's not on the plan now.
No, but we, yeah, we would review it per ordinance. I guess the only, the only issue the planning chair, planning chair mentioned that it would be a difference in the site plan, so it, they're-
So, but to that point then, I guess if everyone believes, including the applicant, that a wall needs to go in, the wall's going to serve different purposes. One wall might serve, if it's four feet and you're trying to prevent people from going around and into it, that's one wall. Another wall is a wall that prevents a car from going into the green space area, which I think you've got, at least have bumpers in there. You, you've got to prevent that. And it's certainly more decorative if you, that wall might be just a couple of feet. So we can, we can agree now that a wall needs to go in. And maybe, I, I guess, someone can decide if it needs to be four feet. I guess I hear some discussion, we don't need to prevent ki, we don't, we don't need a four-foot wall. Maybe we need a three-foot wall or a two-foot wall. I think everyone agrees that maybe we need a wall. And then we can agree on that. And if we can agree on the height and then mandate that some vegetation screening has to go on the other side, then we'll have accomplished what we need to for site plan approval. So what does everyone think? Do we want a wall?
But won't the wall stop the water from going into the newly vegetated area? Stop the water from-
So they, they can create-
With the holes and-
With the holes on the bottom.
Okay.
Make it more decorative.
Like weeping hole, you, you guys-
Huh?
In, in the proposed graded condition, the, the parking lot, because it'll be higher, it'll be outside of that floodplain area, it'll drain to underground storm sewer into the underground detention and then through the outlet pipe into the mitigation.
So it won't be going over the parking lot and that area?
Those parking spots that are on the angle will be, that it will actually be draining north toward the detention spot?
Correct, yep.
My only concern with the walls, what if it makes the area a little worse? What if it's not very attractive? It's not needed to stop, maybe there's a way to stop the cars, the blocking just because it couldn't create more of a-
It's a regular curb, yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure if the residents are going to look through some trees and see a wall and be that happy. I don't, I could look and see what they're thinking.
Yeah, our preference would be to start with screening and then go to a wall only if that's not sufficient. Landscape screening, which I think we have. And if we, if you determine we need more landscape screening up at that higher level of the edge of the parking lot, that would be our preference as this plan to start there. And the wall would be secondary.
Well, I would, I would like that. I would, I would like the idea of just doing a hedge as your block for the cars to go into this area. A hedge serves as a way for the children not to see, you know, children.
Attractive nuisance, yeah.
A landscape hedge, yes, to stop any small positive bumps off, yes.
That seems like the right-
So it seems to solve all problems.
But we'd have to make that part of our, of proving of this plan so we can do that. Because we can't, because we can't really cut off the wall like a, like a pool fence. You just have to make it not noticeable behind there. It's, it's not the attractive nuisance thing, the, the going down the, the area, even if it's a nice slope.
You guys are going to have to do something along the south side of this parking lot. Otherwise, you're going to have cars going into-
It is currently proposed to be curved, six-inch, flat face curve.
So there's a six-inch curb already planned.
And we put a hedge there on the outside of the curb.
I think, I think that's a good solution.
Great idea.
I think so too, I like that. The neighbors will love that.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so we're done with like the engineers and the applicant? Because then what I'd like to do, thank you, sir, is to see if there's anyone in the audience that has comment on this.
About a couple of engineers.
Could you let us know who you are?
Absolutely. I'm Paul Benedict. I'm at the 125 Gilford. So I live a couple lots south.
Could you show us?
Sure.
Well, Eric, can you just show us where this gentleman lives?
He's down the street.
Yeah, down the street, which is, so you see the area, you know, the site.
Right.
And you come out and you come down a couple lots. I'm at Pork Chop shaped lot down to the left, 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 right there. Left, a little more left, right there, that's, that's where I am.
Okay.
And I, I manage a third of an acre of woods myself down there. So I've got some American oak family growing down there. It's really exciting.
Oh, that's cool.
So, yeah, what's important to me is a good planning commission. Thanks, everybody, you're doing some great work here. I love how you're also tying in the thoughts and concerns of the area, the neighbors and such. What's important to me from where I am there, other than S rolls downhill, you know, the floodplain problem, right? I don't want that to change, right? If you raise something, is it going to change my floodplain? It sounds like probably not. So I guess my first question is, is the type of design you've done here normal? Or is this a one-time invention? How, how common is this?
As far as the floodplain mitigation goes, it is very common. That's how floodplain, that's how we control for new development in flood-
So it's been done before?
Yep.
Okay, good, good. In the paperwork, I saw approval from EGLE people talking about eight hundred cut square yards.
Cubic yards, yeah.
Cubic yards, and now you're talking twelve hundred or something.
Yeah, so we have an original Eagle- Yeah, so, we have an original eagle approval. It will have to be amended. The amendment process is much less stringent than the original approval process. So, that will be part of our, you know, final design aspect, but it's been designed to compensate for the amount of fill being put into the floodplain, so.
Okay, good. And then, along lines of like privacy and sound, you know, we're talking a lot about water here, but also there's sound. We really depend a lot on that woods, and so I'm happy to see that at least the current plan isn't driving further to the west. We, you know, it's a scrappy little woods in there, it's not, you know, a national park in there, but, but the, but the distance and the trees, and there's, there's nature there, there's, you know, kingfishers living, you know, living in the trees and fishing in the river and so forth, so we really value that woods, and we just would like you guys to recall, like you are thinking about the, the Bardin folks for the water, think about us over there for our privacy, for the sound of that. So, I'm glad to see that the plan is working without cutting into those trees.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Let us know who you are.
I'm Stephanie Zach. I live on Bardin Court, right by the Rouge, the creek at the south end, by the other side of the water.
So, so, could you...
Well, where the land chop is, where Paul lives, I live a block up north.
You live up here, right?
Yeah, right there, to the west.
Yeah, okay.
Northwest, yeah.
Okay, in the condominium project?
Yeah.
This is all Bardin, isn't it?
Okay. In the condominium project?
Yes.
Okay.
So, a berm is great. I think we would all appreciate a sound visual berm. However, our big problem is water. We're getting flooded. The water runs down into that narrow tributary, and when we send water down from Bardin Road, it gets, it fights with the water that's coming up from the north. It comes into that little area and comes to north. And it, the water hits, and we have pipes in our basement that look like old faithful. We've lost cars. This year in twenty-four, we lost a car in building one. And the water from the north, if it should build up, which you're saying it won't, maybe, that comes down to us. It flows across, what's your street, Lonley?
Long Lake.
Barber, Fliddo.
Barber. It flows across, comes down the middle and floods. So, we had a million dollars of elevator work to do because of the flooding. And we're just told, well, we're proud of you, so you don't have to help us. So, what about the new project that I sat in a meeting and heard Mosher bought the lot from the furrier?
Nothing.
Pardon?
Nothing's happened.
It's not happening?
Nothing's happened.
No, nothing, there's no proposal on the table, and importantly, we're all sensitive to your circumstance, that's why you've heard so much discussion at this table. And, and queries of the applicant and the engineers, and we now have their assurance that this is not going to unfavorably impact your site. And so, we've asked that question at least a half a dozen times, so at this point, I, I think you can walk away from this meeting, because there's not more than we can do. So, there's an application, and we've got to make a decision about whether or not we're going to approve this application, and they furnished us with the, the information that shows they're not impacting in any negative way your water, and so you can feel comforted in that, and if something does happen...
It's got the same water.
Pardon me?
So, we'll have this...
So, so we're not, they're not, they're not remedying it, but it's not gonna be worse, so, if, if that's of any help, so.
The water that runs into the living rooms, the people that live in building one.
Is that coming across Long Lake?
Yes.
So, wasn't that kind of complicated when, when the country club did improvements?
Yes.
And, and can't the country club have to put in drains or something to slow that water that's coming down our new driveway?
Well, Long Lake becomes a mess, and Bardin Road has an area that floods.
Guy, and, and that's sort of like beyond the scope...
Right, because I just think it's not really their, their, their water as much as...
Yeah, they're sort of beyond our scope.
Right.
So, the, these are all, these are all higher level questions that we always look to, I'm just looking at HRC and saying, I'm putting it all on your shoulders, Leah. We, we all heard you say that it's not gonna get worse, so if it gets worse, I guess that's when Jamie comes in.
Yep, for sure.
Okay, so, is there anyone else that has, yes, ma'am?
My lollycracker from Bardin was condos as well, and my concern, I think, was director of motors, Paul's property, and where in that, the...
Right, yeah, no, we know where you're at.
Yeah, the, the water, you know, once it gets there, even though it's going into the detention pond, I understand it's going, you know, seeping into the groundwater and then coming out through the pipes to the southwest corner, and then eventually it obviously ends up in the Rouge, it's the idea of diverting most of that water that's been in the parking lot down to the Rouge, that's right by Paul's property, which is Paul's property, and was just concerned about that, really raising the level of the river and any backflow further north where it intersects with our property and causing more flooding issues, but I was told...
I just wanted to disagree with the chairman on something when he said it's not gonna make it better, but it's not gonna make it worse. I really think that with what HRC has done with Atwell, is they have, they have put in, and Oakland County, Oakland County State, has said they have these retention things, and they're holding the water for seventy-two hours. That gives Bardin a chance to deal with all the water that's coming across, and, and before that goes into the river and comes into your area. So, that, if it were just the retention pond, one thing, but the retention, the retention underneath all of the parking lot, slowing it down for seventy-two hours, that would make me feel a lot happier about, about the Kingsleys taking responsibility for all of their asphalt and, and the community. I really, I'm pretty...
Yeah, I'm just relying on what the engineer...
That's a lot of money they're spending to really hold the water for seventy-two hours.
And it may, I just, that's what the engineer said, it's...
I know.
I want to make a clarification to...
Yes.
That the water that's being detained is only from our site.
Yes.
It's not floodwater that's being detained. Floodwater is being mitigated, there's an area for it to, to occupy on site in a similar way that it does now. We're removing some portion of a rain event, you know, essentially in line with the size of the redevelopment that we're doing.
You're just dealing with your own water.
But, but that's, they just don't want to deal with excess water, that's all, I think it's good.
So, you're saying, so the water that was previously in, that's been flooding from the surface is going where?
Water that falls onto the surface of this new parking lot will be detained underground in this, you know, vault essentially.
It's in the, in the...
Seventy-two hours.
Parking spot, whatever, and then, and then it will dissipate to where it will naturally go, legit.
Yeah, and in, in a larger storm event, water in excess of the volume of that detention would overflow into the mitigation area, which if it were full, would then flood, but it isn't, it's of a volume that's greater than is currently flooding the site that we're developing, or, you know, repaving.
Well, that's what I was beginning to say, that it sounds to me that, I'm making sure that it won't impact, it's like the backup up the river north, and should be pretty minimal impact on the amount of water going into the Rouge that flows by Palpatine, it's very close to the river. And, and they also, you know, obviously we're, to, 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 to the west, if there's more of a slope or more of anything, even with the raised parking lot, it's just gonna be a little farther, higher jump down to that area, and it doesn't seem to flow. I don't know the geography, only I didn't see that there was any arrows pointing down.
Pointing west.
Well, I don't remember seeing it, I'll slide on that anyway.
So, it, it's draining into the parking lot, into the, the catch basins in the parking lot? It's not going directly anyway, so, okay, cool. Are there any other comments?
Just one.
Okay.
We hear water all the time moving underground, so when you have a, a catch basin and the water goes in there, if the water is rising up from this water, that's always, I mean, we hear it when we walk downstairs, what's the shortest amount of time that the basin could contain the water? I mean, that's gonna affect us. Is that taken into consideration?
So, so...
That there's always...
So, your property is separate from theirs, so what may be going on and occurring in, in your situation, they're, they have a different situation, so he can't really op, he can't opine really on what's happening with yours. But I know that, I know that the ci, the city wants to remedy that as much as anyone, so I know you guys are working on this.
We have a meeting in detail of what we, what we did, and we can, we can share that with you if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I would recommend, because you guys are all asking important, good and important questions. It's just that it's, it's outside of the scope of what we're looking at now, because you're actually north of this, and...
No.
No, you're actually, you're sort of north and, and east, or north and west of it, so, so, yeah, so, so it's, it's separate, and so we want to be helpful, and listen, and you can see we paid attention to that to make sure that it's not gonna get worse. Okay.
Thank you very much. Rachel too appreciates that.
So, are there any other questions from any?
Got one more here.
Okay.
Mark Young, I'm seventy Dunbar, just straight to the west of the parking lot there, and I think it was about four years ago when they finished remodeling, they took down probably a hundred harbor meters that were all along the west side of the parking lot. Now, I was told it was because they needed the parking, so, you know, now you're taking away all the parking spots, so it kind of doesn't make sense to me. And now, you know, I can, eight months out of the year, it's great, all the foliage is out, I can't see it. The other four months, you know, I see the whole back of the hotel.
So, let me, let me suggest, so there are screening requirements that run with commercial par, properties, and I remember when that application came in front of us, I don't know if there was a landscape requirement or not.
Well, it's, they're headed for purpose why they took it down.
Well, however...
At one point, they were gonna put a fence, they were gonna put it in.
I guess, I guess what I would suggest, and I defer to the city manager, and say, we need to look at the site plan approval and, for the renovation, and any removal of screening that may have occurred. Okay?
Yeah, I can...
Is that good for you?
Well, sure, sure. I mean, I think it's a great point, because I don't think you're adding any water, it's, you know, you're diverting it perfectly, if you're not adding, you're not subtracting, it's just controlled now versus before, where it's just straight around. Thank you.
So, um, okay, no other comments? So, I'd bring it back to the commission now, so what we've got is, we've, we've got the natural features application, and we've got the site plan application, there's a couple of things that we've got to condition this on, so this eagle application is just for eight hundred and some odd cubic yards, and they're going to amend it, we heard them say there.
Twelve hundred.
So, it's gotta be conditioned on that. We're looking for some screening along the south side, so any kind of motion is gonna have to be conditioned on that, and so I guess I leave it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
And last one, if, if, if with the screening with regard to the public thing, they're actually putting in a, a new asphalt parking lot, right? So, you can, you, you have the power to have them...
They're taking out a parking lot, as I understand it.
They're re, they're redoing the parking lot? And they're raising the parking lot? Just part of the...
We're losing, we're losing square footage, but we also are repaving it.
Right. But you're, you're raising, you're, you're putting in this much paving, or you're building it up, up with dirt and then putting on paint?
Well, the process of getting the detention in there, obviously we have to take out the existing parking lot.
So, you are putting in a new parking lot, so at that point, the city has the power to have them screen there?
You know, I think it's based on, it's based on the original site plan, like the chairman mentioned, and we'll find it, we'll take a look. If there is trees removed out of there that should, that shouldn't be there, we'll be, we'll have to put it back.
And in the context of what I think you're talking about specifically, because of the request, you can require that hedge screening you're looking for, you've got the authority to require that.
Okay, on the west side as well?
Yes, I'd like to put that into our motion then.
That's what I was trying to...
Oh, wait, no, wait, no, no, no.
Just the south side.
You know about the south side?
Just the south side, that's correct. So, that, that pond is...
So, that's what's, that's what you're speaking to Catherine, the south side, right? The hedge on the south?
I'm just saying, you're, you're taking, you're taking this whole, I know it's the wrong picture right there, but they're ripping this all, they're ripping this all out, and they're putting in pipes.
Right.
Can't, can't, do they have to, everywhere with this new?
So, Eric, can you go back, just so we've got a meeting of the minds on...
The only screening you can require is on the south side of the property, so that that pond is not attractive.
So, so, can you go back to the...
Show us what it actually looks like?
I like the idea of it being on the west side.
So, so, but on the other side, there's a lot of vegeta, so are you talking about on the west side?
Yeah, it's not that type, it's just show where the, where the, the, it's the parking lot, we're showing where the gray area is and then the regular area. That one. So, where, where they're having all the, where they're raising up that whole side of the parking lot, now they're raising it up, how far raising up?
Just where the lines are, correct?
Raising it up by six inches, ten inches? Two feet, two feet. So, they're gonna raise up this parking lot by two feet, and I think a raised parking lot by two feet in that area is part and parcel with you, we can require that there's screening on the raised parking lot for all of the, of the people who would be looking at that.
So, and, and are you talking about just on the south side?
No, well, the, no, I'm saying that whole area where there's parking spots, this whole half, the non-grade area, is an area where they're raising up the parking lot by two feet.
Right, got it.
I say that the whole raised area by two feet can be required to have screenings so that the neighbors aren't looking at a two-foot higher, so that, that means this side too.
You mean the west side?
Yeah, right there.
There's so much vegetation at the west side that, that screening we're talking about will not do much. That, yeah, you can see that green space there.
But isn't that sort of like...
But the residents are saying that four months out of the year...
Residents have, they've been in here, they've been in here every other...
There's the arms, it used to be there.
You lived here, right?
They're all gone.
Where were these arms, were they over here?
Right along the fence, or the...
The greens...
Lower part, you see where it's green?
Right here.
I remember them.
So, those went away?
All gone.
Mr. Chairman?
But that's the issue that the city manager is...
Exactly.
Yeah.
My traffic got to exactly where I was gonna go. The west side screening, that's being talked about, that is the issue that Dave will check to make sure that whatever screening was supposed to have been put back at the time that the initial expansion of the parking lot was done, is taken care of. What you can do today is you can require the screening on the south side to prevent that pond from becoming unattractive.
And, uh, to the, on the west side, on the west side, to the extent that there may, so where you see all the greenery that's about halfway up, do you understand what I'm saying right now?
I didn't think it was that far up, I thought it was...
Yeah, so I think the renovation goes up to right where Susan's...
Where it's two feet tall, higher in grade.
So, wherever there's improvement, bottom line is, wherever there's improvement to the parking...
The other podium up there?
You can, we can ask for screening.
Yes.
Do we agree? Yes?
Yeah, I didn't think it went all that far off, but, but yes.
So, everywhere where there's... So everywhere where there's a black line, it's now two, two feet higher in order for them to have done a great thing, which is putting in these retention things amongst all the other expenses that they are taking. And what we're saying is, even if you go back into the plan and you see that they should have, uh, put those arborvitae back, we're gonna require, if we approve this today, that they also screen the raised two-foot-high parking lot.
And, and the screening would reflect...
Evergreen.
Arms or evergreen?
An evergreen, a year-long of... Well, originally had arborvitae replaced.
This is a point of clarification. Where we're meeting the existing grade, we can't raise the grade two feet. So at the line that those parking stripes meet the grade-out parking stripes, there is no grade change really.
The two feet is down to the south.
Yeah, the two feet is just the largest differential, uh, that you're gonna see.
It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
But it's still considered improved.
So, so, so we can sort of like include this a little bit? I guess what I'd suggest is, I think there's, there's agreement on the south side. Um, we're going to install, uh, evergreen hedge. Does, is everyone on... So there's going to be a, there's gonna be a half-foot curb, it's blacktop, we're gonna have a curb, six, six inches tall. On the other side of that, we're gonna put a hedge. How tall is that hedge gonna be, thirty inches?
Three feet.
Three feet, okay? So evergreen hedge, three feet. Um, and then along the west side, I get what you're saying, Mr. Engineer, that if you're meeting the grade, then you're not going to, there's, there's no change in the grade. At the south side, it's gonna be two feet, but then it's going up and it's going to blend into the existing grade, right? So then, um, I heard someone say that they can see the parking lot and some of the arborvitae's have been cleared. I think, um, where, uh, and you're gonna be disrupting the soil anyways. Where it's disrupted, then continue that hedge around headed north and maybe that's a hundred feet, okay? Uh, and just continue that and then it's gonna stop because you're not disrupting anything. Does that make sense to everyone?
Well, but then make sure that it marries up.
But then, yeah, to your point...
I just think it's a new parking lot. This is a new structure.
You can repave a parking lot, you know?
But they can, yeah.
They're not repaving it, they're digging it out.
But then what Dave, what Dave is gonna look at is what was removed. So I, I think, guys, we got...
I could probably work this out in the last...
We got a big project here in terms of repaving this. I think, um, we've gotta have general, we've firmed up here that we want a three-foot hedge on the south side.
You're gonna hit me in the face, you come awfully close.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, can I do that? So, um, and, and, and the applicant and the city need to work together to make sure that we've got a hedge, then even on the west side, to your point, um, up far enough to where the disturbed area, there's vegetation there? And then to the other portion north, Dave? The portion north where the arborvitae's may have been removed, you're gonna look into that. So at the end of the day, this is gonna look really nice. I think that'll be our condition, that you guys make it real nice.
And I know the engineer doesn't understand this, but we consider the Kingsley our hotel. It's where we go when we lose our power. It's, uh, that's where I have our, our wedding reception. Um, it's where we had all our Easters and it's where, um, my dinner date and I are tonight are having dinner at the, uh, at the Joe Muir's. I mean, it's our, it's our place. And every other month, we have people who've complained about, do we have to keep looking at this ugly parking lot of, of the Kingsley? And this is your first opportunity to hear that your Bloomfield Hills residents who consider this their hotel have said, this is an investment we really would like you to make. Um, that's, that's, I know it's the first time you've heard it, but we're hearing it every other hearing. So that's why we're, um, so, uh, asking this up here.
So, so to frame this now, so we've got these couple of applications, the natural features and the site plan, and we've got the conditions of the eagle application amendment and the screening and, um...
I count, I count on Lauren to make the motion, only Lauren knows.
No, I'm not prepared, but go ahead.
So who's, um, or is everyone, is anyone ready to make a motion? Or...
Susan? Susan, you got it?
All right, I'll take a stab at it. Uh, okay, I make a motion that we approve the request for the property owner at three nine four seven five Woodward Avenue, um, as proposed changes with the following conditions. The amendment for the eagle notice of authorization, which is only at eight hundred and eighty cubic feet and they need twelve, and you're now requesting twelve hundred cubic feet. So that amendment is approved by eagle. The screening is sufficient on the south side and the west side of the parking lot that's being re- redone. And the screening on the west side, we're not including that 'cause Dave's gonna do it, is that correct, Dirk?
I think you're including a little bit of it.
Yeah, we're including this.
Where the evergreens were originally.
Where the evergreens were originally, we'd like them, um, replaced or something, you know?
Evergreen.
Evergreen. And then lastly, to Commissioner O'Jays, we want this to look nice.
I didn't, um, in terms of the, the type of screening to the south, did you wanna define that or is it...
Evergreen hedge?
Evergreen hedge.
Good point.
Three feet.
That's three, the twenty-four.
Three feet minimum.
Okay.
Okay.
Spoken like a true attorney to make sure I get the details.
So, um, so we have a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So good luck with your project. Okay. So our next item is... The, um, the planning commission will consider adoption of the 2024 annual report.
Thank you for coming in, everybody.
And so for all of you that regularly read the Michigan, uh, Planning Enabling Act, you know that every year we need to do this report as a planning commission.
Actually, it's impressive, I love looking at it.
And, uh, it makes us feel like we did something. So, um, so annually, we need to, uh, report actually to the city commission what we did. Um, because we'll get a bonus if we...
A dollar?
And so, um, um, ju- just, just the planning commissioners. That doesn't involve the city commission nor the, the city manager, who's an administrative person. It's just the six of us that get that bonus.
Yeah.
Anyways, um, so we have that report. Uh, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review this. This is what we did over the course of 2024. And is there any questions, comments, revisions or... Yes, sir.
It, to me, is absolutely sterling. It covers everything that we covered, uh, all actions taken, and I saw no mistakes.
Okay.
Or typos.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do I have a question?
Uh, yes.
Okay, this is really, not questioning the report, I just clarification work for, um, Dirk and Dave. So, um, one of the, like, for the fourth item down on the first page, it said the ta- the planning con- condition, planning commission action was tabled with direction on changes to be made. And then the current status says tabled on agenda later in 2024. Does that mean that they just never came back to us?
No, it's later, it's, it's further in the report where they came back.
Oh, so it is for, okay.
Sometimes people come back a couple of times, so we just, we put the stats at the end and then you can find it later in the report and then, I think it was approved next time.
Uh, so I look at five nine, eight, five eight nine?
The top of page four.
Okay, all right, I didn't see that, that's good, okay? And then the other one was, um, question I had was, um, it was when, um... So like, on the second one, there's a offensive pool on Haverhill. It was tabled and then the permit has not been issued yet. Does, does that mean it's later on in the report too? I didn't...
No, that one would be just, uh, we're just, they're just, some, some folks take a pause before they start their project, but they have a year to, uh, to comply with their...
That was my next question, so the ones, the one... Oh, five thirty Haverhill, again, if you go down in May. Um, so it was approved and the building permit has not been issued yet. How long do they have?
One year from, uh, uh, March twelfth. So this is March twelfth, if they didn't get a confirmed building permit, then, uh, they have to come back to the planning commission.
Not one year from May fourteenth? That's the same one, right? Five thirty, five thirty?
Or May, May.
Yeah, oh, May, okay. So it's one year from May. So you can't wait a year and a half and go, oh, I'm gonna start it now, they'd have to come back in front of us.
What they could do is they could start, and as long as they're actively working on it, uh, they can continue on with their process, but they get a permit.
Well, and it's also a pool, I assume they don't wanna start it in the winter.
Yeah, there's, everybody has different reasons. Some, some folks actually decide not to do it, believe it or not.
No, no.
So I've got a couple of, um, just questions on the front, on the first page, the zoning ordinance amendments. Um, I think the reference is to 2024, not 2025. Um, there were no ordinance amendments recommended by the planning commission and the city commission in 2024.
Yep.
And...
Thank you.
Um, as far as the discussions of the subcommittees, so that just stayed in the subcommittee. It didn't work its way through from the subcommittee to planning to city, right? Okay, all right, yes.
I have a report for the subcommittee, just to...
Yeah, I get it.
I have, I have a question. Um, that Tiverton people, the Tiverton people with their, um, historical home?
Yes.
Who have that horrible fence that all of their, that's not even connected and, and that their neighbors are still looking at it? Is there still nothing that, that the city can do to, uh, have the fence actually be connected or... I mean, it's obviously replaced a whole section.
No, I think they made, they did some things, they got permits for some things, but they...
And they don't have any, they don't have any cover on their pool still?
Yeah, they, they just changed their plans from what, uh, was approved.
They, they have...
Oh, I remember that one.
Because they were probably talked about their pool house that they were gonna do to, to make the home. Part of that was all included, the fence and the pool house everyone, so it's not that they, as we've seen, they seem to be...
It says they've abandoned the project, but they've been since approved, since then?
They abandoned the project, they require planning commission approval.
Okay, but they've gone, they've gotten approval to do something at this house?
Not yet, not approval yet, but they're...
Okay, 'cause I'm pretty sure they said while sitting here, we'll do whatever we wanna do. This is, this is our property, I'm just wondering how that's turned out for you. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, um, any other, so that was good, well, good catch. Um, any other comments or is there a motion to, to, um, accept this plan and furnish it along to our legislative body, which is our city commission?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the exhibit as prepared and submitted and that we pass it along to our legislative committee.
Who, what, do, will you...
It's amended and amended.
Is it, yeah, amended?
Right.
Excepted revision then?
With, because Will caught the date was wrong, so amended.
So amended, so amended.
Okay, so since you made the motion, you are going to...
Second.
Second the motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, last, uh, second to the last item. Planning commission will hear a presentation on the complete review of the evolution of a planning commission application. I have no idea what this is, so, um...
So I think when Eric comes up here, he always says, hi, I'm Eric P. with Giffords Webster. So I'm gonna say, hi, I'm Amy Burton with the City of Bloomfield Hills. So what we did is we've been talking about, it's, um, city commission, we've been talking about goals. And, um, the evolution of a planning commission application kind of rose to the top about, um, there seem to be a lot of conversations and a lot of topics, questions that come up from the planning commission from time to time. Excuse me, so we thought, excuse me, that we would just, um, do a brief presentation. I'm not gonna take a lot of your time, um, but this will probably be posted on our website too, um, so residents and applicants can, uh, can reference it. Um, I, for, most of you know this, but I've been with the city, I'm going into my twenty-fourth year. And for twenty-four years, I've been able to attend planning and zoning meetings. And they've certainly evolved over that time. So I just thought, um, this might be a good opportunity to, um, to have a quick presentation.
Have you gotten hazardous duty pay for all of them?
No, this for elections.
She gets a gold watch next year, right?
Yeah.
A gold helmet.
Um, so we, um, we have a strategic goal-setting meeting with the city commission, but also administratively. Um, and this kind of rose to the top as to a mission for the building and development department. And there's a lot of words that jump out at you, at me at least, and some of them are unified, um, clear communication, education and enforcement, those are things that we strive to, um, model and to help residents and design professionals as they're going through the process. Um, this is another item that kind of came up this year, the idea of one city, one team. Um, we work really well when everyone's on the same page and we're all rep- we are all representing the city of Bloomfield Hills. This is another interesting thing as we were kind of developing this, um, this presentation, who represents the building development services department? Every single one of us. This is the only department where every employee of the city of Bloomfield Hills, every elected official, every appointed official, actually has some involvement with the building and development services. So I just thought that screen was, that image was powerful. Um, here's another stat, so, um, total building permits issued, four hundred and forty-five. If you consider mid-to-large-scale projects, there were about a hundred and ninety. This is average over about three years. Um, office hours appointments, I'll kind of get into what that is later, but Giffords Webster and HRC meets with different individuals, property owners, contractors, and they average about eighty-four meetings a year. Approximately six hundred and seven plan review hours, that's in-house, um, as well as plans that we may need consulted use for. Inspections, building and soil stabilization, soil erosion inspections, nineteen hundred for a year. Planning commission applications, forty-four. You just approved your annual report, so you saw that, and zoning board at seventeen.
Amy, question. Uh, total building permits issued, is that for, uh, improvements, new hall, new homes and offices and everything?
Everything, it even includes, yeah, windows, roof, siding.
I was just gonna say.
So, yeah, the idea is to kind of, um, how active is the building department? There, there's a lot of large projects, a hundred and ninety, but there's a lot of other things that the building department does as well and kind of manages.
Okay, I wonder, 'cause I, in our city commission meeting, I saw like there's twenty-three.
Yeah.
And I was like...
That doesn't add up. But if you're including all of those other ones, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay, so you're doing all of, okay.
So there's forty-four, uh, so out of a hundred and ninety of these big projects, forty-four of them, uh, forty-four going for the planning commission. So I guess, uh, what that means to me is that this whole entire team's working on a lot of big projects. And we're, you know, we're doing a lot of reviews and a lot of things going on, so, you know, by the time it gets to you guys, we do a lot of practice, just so...
Yeah, but the, the other thing too is people don't understand, uh, you know, neighbors stop me all the time and, um, say, how can you let that house go up? You know, or whatever, and I, and I'm always saying to them, if they meet all the guidelines that we have, it doesn't come in front of us. We don't see every single house that goes up.
Yes.
So that's where you guys come in, 'cause you're making sure it has all the guidelines. And so they don't need to come in, like Matt says, he doesn't need to come in front of us.
Right, the planning commission really is just because that these folks wanna go outside the ordinance.
Right.
And, uh, but if we can keep everybody inside the ordinance, those are, that's that hundred and ninety for the big projects.
Yeah, okay, thank you. But I just wanted to clarify, the permits are everything?
Yes.
Blue windows?
Yes.
Yep.
A window, something like that.
Anything that requires a permit.
So that's just one year?
That's an average, an annual average, so I took a couple of years and averaged it out.
So in essence, when the Tiverton people who basically told us to shove it come in here and they want to put in a six-foot fence and we say, no, you have to, we need it screened, you can put in a four-foot fence, we need to have it screened. And they say, we'll do whatever we, we wanna do, we're just not gonna do anything, we'll make our neighbors look at that nasty fence. They're gonna come back and unless they ask for a six-foot fence, it doesn't come in front of us.
Well, you know what, the pride and the best way to answer this is that we have a lot of experience with all sorts of folks and a lot of people... And a lot of people want to do what they want to do, and, uh, we follow the policies, we follow the ordinances, and we're, we're very good at, uh, discussing these things when the folks want to, want to install things and try to get a permit. We make sure that whatever they're, they're doing is within, uh, the ordinance guidelines, or we're not gonna issue a permit.
Okay, thanks.
So really, the path to the planning commission, there's, I, I added a couple hot topics here just to remind myself what I wanted to say, but the planning commission application really starts at typically a consultant office hour. So it's a complimentary. Um, we have once a month meeting where HRC and Giffords is here. Anyone can call and schedule appointment with the city staff. We set you up for a forty-five minute appointment. And you can present your project to Giffords and to HRC. You can ask ordinance questions, you can get feedback. Um, or you can just get help with the algebraic formula and the building height, average building height, all the things that they typically, um, tend to talk about. Um, so it's something, it's a service we provide to the residents, to their design professionals. It's something that we have found is valuable for a suc, a successful project to get through the planning commission. Um, the escrow account, you probably have heard us talk about that, um, maybe not at planning commission, but definitely at city commission. So over fifteen years ago, the city commission adopted an ordinance that requires all private development to be funded by the applicant. So taxpayer dollars do not fund your pool review, um, or your cabana review. It's funded by the escrow account. So we have a form where residents, um, agree to, um, it delineates that it, um, they, so they understand what they're agreeing to. We provide statements so that we have a responsible use of their money for the escrow account. Um, and it's something that the free consultant hour, we take that opportunity to talk to them about it as well. Hey, we're gonna give you this one appointment for forty-five minutes. You can come in and get all your questions out. Then you have to submit an escrow so that once we go through the review process, we're following that ordinance. It's really critical. We also copy the property owner and the contractor on all that communication. I think I'm jumping in my slide here, but what we found is, um, including the property owner and the con, the contractor on that communication really closes a loophole that sometimes can create a, a divide. Um, property owners are really invested in how their contractor is spending the city's resources to move the project forward. So that's been a successful change that we made over the last probably six years.
I just made an observation, we would have really screwed up your presentation if we didn't approve the Eisenberg project.
I know, I know. Well, there's a
Bullet.
I, looking through this project, and this is probably a story for another day, but I really felt like that, this application, and someone said it in their motion, I think Craig did, um, that was a fantastic application.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From the way that they approached every bit of it, um, everyone here in the city actually knows all of these planning commission applications. So you could go talk to anyone of, um, the front office staff, and we are intricately aware of planning and zoning applications.
I would also say on that one though, that the people that they chose are people who are familiar with doing business in, in the city. Like Matt's been in front of us for years, and TSA has been in front of us for years, and they all know how we work, what our ordinances are, probably better than some of us. And so it was, hats off to them for being really well prepared and you guys making sure they were.
But you really pushed them, didn't you? You really pushed them on the cuts and fills and made them come back a whole bunch, even though they had the team.
And that what you're hitting on is probably the bigger goal of this presentation, is that all of that happens with every single application. So these aren't, these are, applications get to an agenda by design. It is not by accident that they just submit and one week later they're on the planning commission agenda. There's quite a process. So I appreciate
Yeah.
that comment, cause that is the goal, is so that we're all working together to get you, it's your job as the planning commission to make an informed decision, to have all the information you need to vote independently on what you're, on what's before you, so. Um, we've worked with our applications and our checklist and our plan submitted to, to Commissioner McCarthy's point about Matt Moser may know the ordinance is really well, but our goal is so that everyone can be Matt Moser would they, when they open up our website or they open up the ordinance book, that everyone has the same resource and can have a fair and impartial hearing. Um, so we've really worked with checklist so that people see upfront what's expected of them. And whether that's things that are in the ordinance or things that the planning commission has typically seen and given feedback over the years, I think that's in a later slide too, but, um, we actually documented, hey, the planning commission talks about these five things. And while you're not gonna find it in the ordinance, we really urge you to put it on your plan because it's a trend that you're gonna hear from the planning commission. And most people take that advice, so, um, they'll go back and search minutes. They'll go back and, um, and kind of look at other applications to benefit their own, their own project. I'm gonna jump really quick, cause I don't want to take too much of your time, but the third, the fourth one there, the team tracking, the Google doc, I think is really, um, powerful. So I think we've had this since two thousand seventeen. We created a robust Google document. So HRC, Giffords Webster and the city of Bloomfield Hills staff share a Google document that tracks every single activity, piece of activity from email, phone call, plan submitted, response for every single application. So I can go into an address and I can see when the architect emailed Eric. I can see when they called Leah for a question. That helps us track your escrow, so we know that we're using your escrow funds appropriately. It also helps when there's a question, hey, I think they sent Erica plan, but we didn't get it here. We all want to be on the same page. Make sure that everyone's looking at the same thing. Um, we do staff site, site visits that not, that's not just consultants, that's also Dave and I. We drive out sometimes, because if we're gonna put something on an agenda, we want to understand it ourself. Um, so the end of the planning commission path is the applicant gets feedback and revisions from all of our consulting team. And then really, most times, and I think we've said it before, a lot of people just want their day in front of you with the planning commission. So we may be able to, Leah may be able to get them to four feet of fill in a small corner of the project. And she, she thinks that there may be an opportunity to get zero, but a lot of times people just want their opportunity. And they really have the right to come to you, so we work really hard to get them to the smallest amount of ask possible, um, and then it's up to you guys. So we want to make sure that you have the information you need. This is the Google doc I was talking about. So one cool feature is HRC and Giffords have two weeks to get us back a review. You'll see those, the yellow colored, uh, um, dates in there. That means in a couple of days, that's gonna turn red. That means it's been two weeks. So we call and say, hey, um, you get us the project. A lot of times it doesn't turn red. You don't see a lot of different colors on here. You don't see any red on here. The red, the purple is waiting revisions and the green is ready to go either to planning commission or for a building permit.
That's really impressive.
And you keep Giffords to two-week deadlines, huh?
Yeah.
Wow.
And we, they know that we're calling two weeks, it turns red, we send an email.
Cool.
Yeah. But this is the document where I can see, yeah, you don't want to be red. Where you can see, I can see if they called Eric. We have a real history then on the notes. It's just been a really helpful process.
Is that open to the public?
Um, it's not on our website. It's an internal document, but it's a public document, so anyone can, yeah, anyone can see it. Um, average cost to appear before the planning commission. So this has been a discussion at city commission. We did a full five-year review of escrow costs and project costs. Basically, a conservative estimate is twenty thousand dollars. Those are all the things that are required either in our ordinance. Um, the items that are starred are items that an applicant would not have to do if they weren't going to planning commission. So, um, a grading graphic, the graphic that shows you where the area of fill is gonna be, a color rendering, a lot of times those are not required if it's just a building permit, um, the application fee to the planning commission, and then the plan sets, you know, producing the actual documents that you receive. We've cut that down because a lot of times now we're giving you just the small sets of plans, so we copy those here. We're trying to help the applicant to not have to spend money to go to, um, the copy place and spend a couple hundred, a couple thousand dollars to get plans. So I, I include this slide to tell you, we understand how much it takes for an applicant to get to a board or commission. And that's why we have all of these processes in place so that we are good stewards of their funds, um, to come before you. Um, these are just some best practices. I talked about the checklist. Again, um, we paid attention to discussion at planning commission and zoning board. What are some things that are typically discussed? And can we give an applicant some feedback? With the, with the caveat always, we are not a voting member of the planning commission, but this is what, things that we typically hear from planning commission or zoning board. Um, we copy the property owner and all the correspondence. I already mentioned that. Oh, um, two failed consultant reviews. So if you're an applicant and you've gone through the review of HRC and Giffords twice and you still have not got approved for an agenda, there's no more messing around. You gotta come in here and meet with us because obviously there's a miscommunication and we don't want to continue and drag out the review process and new plans. We're gonna all sit around the table. That includes an administrative staff member as well as their team, property owner, anyone's invited.
Who, who, who's at these meetings?
Uh, we do.
You?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, awesome. And you'll call in the builder?
Uh, anyone that's on their team that they want to be there. I mean, I'm not, I can't direct them, but
More money?
Yeah.
Oh, very nice. Okay, thanks.
What we found is, um, a lot of things that get lost in email or lost in a phone call, when you're actually sitting around the table with someone, it's easier to sort it out, so, um, the two, two fails was a good move. Uh, we moved to electronic plan review, so when you're submitting your project to begin with, you're not having the expense of actually printing out the plans. You send it to us electronically. We ship it off to our consultants electronically. And then the only cost for printing plans is when they actually are on an agenda and if they have to submit full-size plans. Our building official and code enforcement officer, um, have a pre-construction meeting when, after planning commission approval, before a permit is issued. That's a requirement. So they have to go through the motion of the planning commission. Any conditions that are building code, city code, zoning code related are documented in that meeting. And they're attached to the, um, building permit once it's issued.
Um, yeah.
Can I mention something? One, one thing that we've done recently new is that we have, we actually have them sign the plan, the approved plan. We have assigned a document that says they're going to do the approved plan. That's just another step for us. That way, down the road, when they make all these changes, they can't say that they didn't agree to the approved plan.
Yeah.
Your honor, Exhibit A.
Yeah, yeah.
On the portion of this, you know, we, it's an extra little step.
Yes.
I think it tells us.
Sorry.
No, it's, no, you stole my next slide, but that's fine.
Oh.
So if someone were to ask me, if an applicant, we, we send out neighbor notices to five hundred, people within five hundred feet of a subject property. The very first thing I do is go to the Giffords letter. That is the summary of everything that the planning commission's being asked to review. So we crafted this letter and Giffords has been great over their time working with us here. It's evolved. But the title block, there's a quality control measure, so you can see who, who did the plan, who reviewed that, a quality control review. Um, the escrow number that we charge so that we know that it's being funded by the applicant. Um, the first box is everything the planning commission, their scope, your authority. Um, the next box is site overview. What are the conditions of the site? Is ZBA approval required for any portion of this? So that's how the first page is set up. The second page is another reiteration of what, everything that Giffords Webster has looked at in this application. So every ordinance that would apply to this petition is going to be noted, how it was reviewed, if it meets, if it doesn't meet the criteria, and if it requires your approval. Um, this page, and this usually goes a couple pages, but this is the actual ordinance. So the ordinance of fences in residential districts, this, this is not Eric's verbiage until you get down to the bold portion. This is the actual ordinance language that he pulls from the city code. So, um, you have it as a reference. The applicant gets these letters. Um, it's a complete document, um, to use for your, for your deliberations.
Amy, can I make a comment? Could you go back to that slide? Isn't it true that the bottom portion of that, the bold text related to the proposal is not an opinion?
Right, yes, thank you.
By our plans. I think it's really important that the planning commission understand that, or if you can explain it, I'm sorry.
We were intentional, I think, and the chairperson was, um, a part of this conversation in between the transition from one planning consultant to the other is, um, intentional about communicating that the planner's opinion is not incorporated in this review letter. It's, they're reviewing to the standards of the ordinance. They're giving you fact. They may give, um, some, some comment such as, um, we think there's enough screening there, but if the planning commission would like further, that you can talk to the applicant. That's about the extent of an opinion you're gonna get in this letter. This slide probably should have been earlier in the presentation because I know that Eric starts every office hour meeting with yard definition. Because it really drives how a project's gonna be reviewed. So I picked three that were very different. Giffords always uses the same color, so you can see the green is the front yard, the yellow is the side yard, and the peachy orange color is the rear yard. So, um, there's so many different kinds of lots in every place, every location in the city is unique. But certainly it drives how the ordinance is applied. And as a resident, you probably don't know, unless you're gonna do a project, that you have this sort of yard definition with your property. So, um, Eric starts every office hours that meeting, and it's also included in every single one of your letters. It's that important.
Eric, how many people are really understand, you tell them they have two front yards?
I have two front yards.
I know, but I mean, that's the point, is that this is one of the biggest things I learned on the planning commission is
So why can't someone petition for their, cause their, of course, their home is a section of what used to be a huge estate or something, correct? So why can't they petition for something to be a backyard or a side yard or, like, something as logical as, you know?
Cause we have, the ordinance defines the yard, the yard.
I don't think that is a, in Durkin, this is definitely a question for Durkin Eric, but I don't know that that's, uh, an appeal that the zoning board of appeals can make, is the yard definition.
You can make an interpretation, I suppose, but section twenty-four dash three of the zoning ordinance defines a number of different things, including front yard, rear yard, side yard. And, you know, I guess if there was some ambiguity about a particular definition, you know, you could try to work through that, um, but they're really set forth in the definitions of the zoning ordinance. So you've got, you've got, you've got to follow the definition.
Um, I'm almost done here. HRC's letter, um, it can, it came up tonight with the Kingsley, um, discussion. So, um, we've worked with them too over the years and this, the letter format has changed. Um, but there's a statement about stormwater and drainage that's included in every letter. If it has been reviewed by HRC and it was provided by the applicant, um, on a certified sealed plan and HRC reviewed it, there's a stormwater or drainage statement. It's not gonna get to you unless that's in there. So it's simply a non-negotiable. It, we wouldn't put something on the agenda, um, if that's not, if that box isn't checked.
Can I make a comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
So that statement in there, I worked pretty hard with, uh, with, uh, HRC because I, I heard the planning commission was very concerned is, cause you would hear over and over again, are you sure this is not gonna affect the property? And so I worked very hard with Jamie and Leah till we come to an agreement that they could feel comfortable with as engineers in signing this letter with a statement that says that, just that, that, uh, they're making sure, uh, that this is not gonna be impactful. And that, that's what that statement, that's, you'll see that statement in every letter. If that's not there, then they're not sure. So I suppose the reason I did it is because we do have engineers in the city. These are the professionals. And in my opinion, we have to follow what the professionals say. We can't, we can't be engineers on the board and try to figure all this stuff out. We just have to follow what they say. So I wanted to make sure that the, the planning commission, or any commission that, that, uh, the engineers have to deal with, that they can, they have that statement in there, so you're comfortable with it. Thanks, Amy. Sorry, Leah.
No, thank you. Last slide. Um, planning commission granted my approval, what happens next? So this is just a flow chart, um, really brief. It doesn't capture everything, but to give you an idea of how we take your motion and how we, um, incorporate your conditions of approval, if you have them, into the building permit process and how we monitor and check it. Um, so approved plans and a planning commission motion goes to the building department. Um, after that is where I mentioned the pre-construction meeting with the building official and code enforcement. Um, the permit's issued, and this is what, where it comes in when Dave mentioned, we have them sign off, the contractor, the property owner, on a, this is a relatively new thing that we do, but have them sign off that they are only gonna build with, that the plan, the plan that was approved by the planning commission. And that's, all of that is public information and all of that is stored with your file, with your building permit file. A building permit's valid for six months and a project timeline to complete the project is required to extend it. So that's an ordinance that was changed a few years back, and it really is motivation so that you, as neighbors to a construction project, aren't having to see construction languish and have three years of a construction project because there was no motivation. So they have to submit a timeline, they have to have meetings with the building official, and it has to be signed off by the city manager. So there are checks and balances to make sure that construction's moving. Um, homes, pools and accessory building locations are reviewed prior to onsite construction to make sure the location is accurate. Um, the next, soil stabilization, tree protection, construction, parking, grading, building, city and zoning codes are all things that are part of the building, um, permit process. are part of the building permit process, that are reviewed, inspected, documented. Brian Vargas, our building official, does project check, progress checks. So if he feels like, hey, I haven't been out to a project in a while, I'm going to schedule me inspection, I'm going to go take a check and see what's going on there. Those are the opportunities for having conversation with the contractor, talking with the property owner if they're out there. But these are all things that we've put in place to make sure that the building, conditions of the building permit are filed.
So you guys are a little tighter in there, two weeks to move things along, two weeks to move things along. Why would he not be a little more, he had, he's required to be at a site in a certain amount of time? Seems like you're running, it seems like your city's running really tight, and then there's, hey, then it's the first time you've done this in this whole presentation. Hey, you haven't been there in a while. What's, what, is there too much of a time, is there, is it okay for, for the, for, for that to be given a time code for?
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and it's kind of why we started the progress check, because I don't know
Yeah.
how building works. I'm not, I would never pretend to understand how long it takes for an addition or a pool to be installed, and all of the facets that go along with that. So when we have our, we have building meeting every two weeks, internal staff, and we go through reports, we go through open permits and projects that are, that are out there. There are some times when Brian says, hey, I haven't been to this project in a while, it popped up. But it popped up in our two-week meeting. So we, we look at reports every two weeks, and we're looking at dates, how long, when's the last time you had an inspection, when's the last time you provided us a timeline? So it's a, we get a prompt with our systems that we've put in place, for that exact reason.
Well, I just did, I just didn't like being that person, maybe three or four times, calling on Martell, and then talking to the guys real simply. This is one TSA site, the guy's sweeping the road. You guys are five houses up, and you can't seem to sweep the road. And they're like, well, you know, and then I'm like, then I call there and TSA gets all pissy, and it's like, I don't, you know, I don't know what you're, what you're talking about. And I'm like, it's real simple. It's the dirt. One TSA site's being run well, the other site isn't, but everyone on the cut-through street, which is a cut-through street, is just tracking the mud all the way.
Yeah.
You know, tracking the mud all the way.
Do you track the construction site management?
Yeah, and I was, I was just wondering what the construction site management, keeping even the TSA, without us having to call. I mean, I can...
You know, what we have is, we have, just, just, one thing I follow up with Amy, is that we have plans of completions for people to extend their permits. And part of the thing, one thing that I look at when Brian does his reviews, is if he makes notes that he's visited the site. Because I have to make sure, according to the ordinance, that the projects moving forward, you know, there's some language in the ordinance that says diligently or whatever. And, and so, and then I sign off with a timeline. But to your point about the project sites and how they're, you know, maybe parking or mud issues, we actually have a list of high-priority projects, and our code enforcement officer has that list, he drives around, our building official has that list, he drives around, and public safety has that list when they, when they drive around. So they know which houses are under construction, and the people should be there, shouldn't be there, if there's things going on, there may be permit, without permits, if there's R-30 streets, and we take all, you know, we're never going to touch everything. We've got a pretty thorough process that we actually don't get too much, too much of it, too many complaints.
Yeah, I mean, they, they literally tied the sewer system up to your sewer system. They did some amazing stuff there. So, I mean, I got the mud, but I would just, if, if I'm, if I'm having to call to complain, I'm just hoping residents aren't calling complaining. That's why I was questioning. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Required before final approval, Asbilt plans, they have to, we, administration has to sign off on the planning commission conditions of approval. Permit's not finalized until all the conditions of the planning commission are approved, which is why you've seen 132 Lynda Court, that was one that came back several times in 2024. Those were caught at the Asbilt, I think Lynda Court was caught before the Asbilt. There are safeguards in place. We've put even more safeguards in place to have inspections sooner, to your point, Commissioner Vargie. It's something that's important to us, and it's something that we've heard from the planning commission. You don't want to hear, you don't want to see people come back that got approval, and then they didn't build what they were supposed to. Enforcement and notices of violations are issued when there's non-compliance, and that's, that's direction that building department and code enforcement both know all too well. So over the last five years, we have had 157 applications, and four or five of them had to come back to planning commission. So you've seen a lot in the last year, but over a number of years, it's a relatively small amount that actually couldn't, I think Lynda Court was the most extreme. They could not comply with their original plan without completely disrupting their site. So we heard you, and it's a priority for us, because it's a priority for you. So I think that's it. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
We all are the team, and thank you for letting me come up again.
Thank you.
Real quick follow-up, and by the way, this is excellent. Is this going on the website, do you think?
I will put it up.
I really think great, you're really well done.
So I found interesting your remarks about the engineering commitment that you're making here, and to this particular application for the Kingsley. So you signed off on this, based in our detailed analysis of the site ordinance best engineering, we find that proposed improvements have no adverse drainage impacts on the subject or surrounding properties. That's kind of, I mean, that's, I applaud you for sticking your neck out like that, but is that, is that a commitment? I mean, does that get reworked and reworked internally as the initial plans come in, and then you talk about, well, what are you doing? And then, does that section of your review letter kind of get modified as the plans change? But, you know, there's a lot of folks that you're copying on this, and I'm just impressed that, that, that seems like a big commitment, that, you know, you're, you're talking about, like Barden, right? And so I'm, I'm impressed that you guys have included this into the concept here that comes before the PC.
Yeah, you laid your neck out there.
Yeah, so I, is this, is this new, or is this?
I will say, before we get to that letter, we start with a form, and a lot of our form comments are at the beginning, are you have to provide stormwater improvements. So we don't actually give them a letter like this till the very end, till we are comfortable with that, before it's going through multiple reviews, multiple reviews.
Well, I, it's, it's nice that the Kingsley guy came in here and got to hear some of the Barden people. Not the worst, though, the Barden people, really nice Barden people.
Yeah, there's some...
Those are, those are really nice Barden people. But, but the, the engineer has nothing to do with the landscape guy. What a mess you guys have to see if they actually put that in the way they've, you know? The, the engineer guy said to do it this way, and is the landscape guy going to do it? That just seems like, that the landscape guy wasn't here on such a big project. It's a little crazy. I hope they...
We'll figure it out. But to your, to your point, though, Commissioner, the reason that we, we're doing this is that, just because, there's, I don't think there's any engineers up here. So really, the, the planning commission shouldn't be discussing engineering things or challenging all these engineering things. That's why we, this, actually, I think it's, it's not even right to challenge all this stuff, because they have, are providing a letter to the planning, to the planning commission. Maybe I don't need to ask questions, though, there's nothing wrong with that. But at the end of the day, we are relying on...
Yeah, you're giving an opinion, but this is a place where we really need an opinion.
Right.
Yeah, that is a distinction between the planning and the engineering, and we've been, that's been intentional that way.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
I think that everybody, as the chairman said, in the end of the day, we're going to, we were going to approve that, because nobody in here had enough engineering background to overturn it and say it's not right. But it's also our job, I feel, as a planning commission, and you can tell by the, by the residents that were in the audience, they appreciate it when we ask those questions.
Yeah.
They want us to ask those questions.
They're going to go out and tell their 45 unhappy Barden neighbors.
Well, and the other point is, it's really crucial, because you put your stamp of approval on the plan, that, that we go out while they're digging it up and while they're putting in, before they cover it all up with asphalt, we got to make sure they're putting in the correct drainage and, and tanks, and, I mean, I...
We have our...
And they do that.
Can't just hopefully do it the way they...
That's part of the inspection.
And part of the permit, permit inspection process.
Part of those 1900 inspections, I said.
Yeah, we need more of those, because things are, you know...
Thank you for entertaining my question.
Thanks, Amy, great job.
Thank you, you had a really nice presentation.
So, and lastly, planning commissioner comments. Nothing? Anything? Anyone? Okay. Good meeting, guys.
Thank you.